Welcome to a meeting of your Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners. Representing District One, Harry Cohen. Representing District Two, Ken Hagan. Representing District Three, Gwen Myers. Representing District Four, Christine Miller. Representing District Five, Donna Cameron Cepeda. Representing District Six, Chris Bowles. Representing District Seven, Joshua Wostel. The county administrator is Bonnie Wise. The county attorney is Christine Beck. Time is set aside at the beginning of each meeting for citizens to speak on any issue. So we have time for everyone. Speakers are asked to limit their comments to three minutes. Today's meeting is brought to you with closed captioning by Hillsborough Television.
Good morning. Welcome to the Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners, September 17, 2025, regular scheduled board meeting. Everyone please rise for the pledge and invocation given by our chaplain commissioner Gwen Myers.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Gracious heavenly Father, as this fiscal year comes to a close, we thank you for all of the many projects that you have bestowed upon this county. I would just like to name a few. The passing of our CIT tax, the county receiving $709 million in CDBG DR funds, more affordable housing projects being built, just to name a few. Thank you for all of our employees that continue to work and serve this community. We know this year we've lost some, but you also kept many with us. Thank you for this board, the leadership of our county administration and her team. I continue to ask you to bless your love, give us guidance, and give us peace as we discuss your agenda in this meeting this morning. In your holy name I pray, amen.
Thank you Commissioner Myers. This morning, we have one proclamation. It will be presented by Commissioner Miller.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. With the following individuals, please join me at the podium. I have Sandra Attilis Tyrell, founder and CEO of SAT Industrial Supply and Solutions; Maria Campos, president of Elevate Seven; Dr. Ignacio A. Ferris III, Ph.D.; Derek Mateos, president and co-founder of MattCon Construction Services; our very own Susie Lopez, state attorney; John Mahia of Mega Services Solutions; Antonio Salvagio, president of eSmart Recycling. It is a great day in Hillsborough County. Good morning and welcome to all of you. I would also like to take this opportunity to recognize, along with those that are up here with me this morning, the following individuals in the audience who are instrumental to the success of the Hispanic communities. My dear friend Arlene DeBignino, president and CEO of Conversa; Marilyn Alvarez of the Hillsborough County Sheriff's Office; Melissa Ramos, president of the Hispanic Professional Women's Association; Maria Torres, president of the Tampa Hispanic Heritage Incorporated; Kathleen Carvalha, president of the Sheriff Hispanic Advisory Council; Marybel Garrett, Hispanic liaison for the city of Tampa; Diana Walker, president of the Tampa Latin Chamber; Maria Bermudez Torres; Mercedes Young, president of the Hispanic Chamber of Tampa Bay; and Ellie Rodriguez, community relations liaison of the Office of Community Impact. It is a pleasure to recognize and celebrate the history, culture, and contributions of Hispanic Americans, specifically those whose ancestors came from Spain, Mexico, the Caribbean, Central and South America. Hispanic Americans are vital to the prosperity of Hillsborough County, Florida, and the United States. Their legacy helps strengthen our county's economy, education, and cultural growth. Every year, Hillsborough County recognizes September 15 through October 15 as Hispanic Heritage Month. I am very excited to present the proclamation, which honors the numerous accomplishments made by Hispanic Americans today and throughout our county's history. I'm going to hand you this. The proclamation reads, "Whereas one of the greatest treasures of the United States is the variety of its people and its cultures, and Hispanic Americans are an integral part of the nation. And whereas, according to the U.S. Census Bureau, more than 65 million Hispanic Americans live in the United States, making them the largest, the nation's largest minority group with approximately 6 million residents residing in Florida and more than 420,000 in Hillsborough County, representing over 25% of the county's population. And whereas, Hillsborough County is home to a vibrant Hispanic community with roots in Cuba, Colombia, Puerto Rico, Mexico, the Dominican Republic, Spain, Costa Rica, Venezuela, and other nations. And whereas, the rich Hispanic influence is evident in all aspects of American life and culture, including the arts, sciences, business, academia, the United States Armed Forces, athletics, and government. And whereas, Hispanic entrepreneurs and business leaders play a vital role in driving innovation, creating jobs, and strengthening the local economy. With Hispanic-owned businesses among the fastest-growing sectors in the United States, and whereas, the contributions of Hispanic Americans continues to enrich the nation's heritage and strengthen the United States as a beacon of freedom and opportunity. And whereas, Hispanic Heritage Week was first established in 1968 under President Lyndon B. Johnson to honor Hispanic Americans, and was later expanded in 1988 by President Ronald Reagan to cover a 30-day period observed annually from September 15 through October 15. Whereas, Hispanic Heritage Month celebrates the achievements of Hispanic Americans and recognizes the contributions of local Hispanic leaders who have positively impacted Hillsborough County. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida, does hereby declare September 15 through October 15, 2025, as Hispanic Heritage Month in Hillsborough County, and encourages all residents and visitors to join in celebrating the numerous contributions of Hispanic Americans to the nation, to the state of Florida, and to Hillsborough County, executed the 17th day of September, 2025."
Good morning. Commissioner Christine Miller, members of the Hillsborough County Board of Commissioners, community leaders, fellow honorees, and friends, it is a true honor to stand here with you today. When I moved to Tampa in 2007, I could have only dreamed of standing here. Back then, I looked up to the community members who paved the way for Hispanics with a dream like me. To now be part of this celebration is both humbling and inspiring. I am truly grateful to this wonderful city for welcoming me and for the many opportunities it gives to the Hispanic community. As someone born in San Juan, Puerto Rico, Hispanic Heritage Month holds a very special place in my heart. It is a time to celebrate not only the richness of our culture, the traditions, the language, the music, the food, but also the resilience, determination, and contributions of Hispanic people in every part of society. As a Hispanic woman entrepreneur and proud owner of SAT Solutions, the more than $7 million business that I built with my husband here in Tampa, I stand as a testament to the possibilities that come from hard work, faith, and perseverance. This recognition is not just about my business, it is about all of us, it is about every Hispanic entrepreneur, every family, every community member who strives to make life better for the next generation. Our stories are proof that with determination and unity, anything is possible. Thank you again for this incredible honor. I look forward to continuing to serve our community, to uplift others, and to celebrate the vibrant contributions that make Hillsborough County stronger, more resilient, and more united. Because juntos, together, we move forward. Thank you very much.
That was beautiful. Thank you for sharing. Would all of you like to come up and join us for a picture, please? We're going to go back here and get the picture. That was so lovely. Watch yourself on this here. I'm always so afraid.
Hello. Good to see you.
Bonnie, want to review the changes to the agenda?
Thank you. Good morning, commissioners. We have one off-the-agenda item by Commissioner Wostel. This is item F5. This is to rescind all remaining current and future funding that has been allocated for Masjid Al Nasr Inc. We have one item that has been deleted. It's item A21. This is to appoint seven trustees to the Board of the Valrico Manor Special Deputy District due to lack of sufficient trustees needed for a quorum. We have several items for time certain. The first one is at 9:45, which is item B6. It is related to item B7. This is to approve submission of the annual report for the Hillsborough County Sheriff's Office School Speed Zone Camera Program. Then item B7, which is related to B6, also at 9:45, is to approve submission of the annual report for the Hillsborough County Sheriff's Office for Red Light Camera Program. Item D1 at 10 o'clock is to conduct a public hearing to accept comments on the second substantial amendment to the Plan Year Home Investment Partnership Program, American Rescue Plan, allocation plan for additional funding in the amount of $15,590 to the allocation plan. Item D2 at 10 o'clock is to conduct a public hearing and adopt a resolution certifying that the Greater Hillsborough County Fair Association, Inc.'s agricultural education and promotional facility at the Hillsborough County Fairgrounds serves a public purpose. Item D3 at 10 o'clock is to conduct a public hearing to make final determination on the application from the University of South Florida Medical Response Unit for an ambulance certificate of public convenience and necessity. Item D4 at 10 o'clock is to conduct a public hearing to receive public input and discuss modifying the approved list of projects for the Phase IV of the Community Investment Tax, including adding projects for transportation and fire services. Item G1 at 10:15 is to receive a report regarding updates on the newly planned toll road along U.S. Highway 301 and the Riverview Community Plan, with a special appearance by Greg Slater, Executive Director, Chief Executive Officer of the Tampa Hillsborough Expressway Authority, and Jay Collins of the Planning Commission. Item 1030 at B1 is to accept the 2026 Annual Audit Plan performed by the County Internal Auditor's Office. 11:45 is a recess for lunch. Those are the changes to the agenda.
Motion approved.
Blue for approval.
Second.
Motion Commissioner Myers, second Commissioner Wostel. Please accord your vote. Changes to the agenda?
Motion carried seven to zero.
Okay, the board will go into the public comment portion of the agenda. Now, the board welcomes comments from the citizens about any issue or concern. Your opinions are valued in terms of providing valuable input to board members. However, at the same time, it is requested when you address the board that comments are not made directly at the board or the staff, but rather the issues. We've set aside 45 minutes for public comment this morning. I want to call your name. Please come forward. State your name. Each person will be given three minutes. The first three speakers are David Coleman, followed by Connie Rose, and then Richard Muhammad, who's virtual. Is David Coleman present? If not, Connie Rose, followed by Richard Muhammad, and then Jan Edwards. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, county commissioners. Greetings to you. On behalf of Masjid Al Nasr's Board of Directors, I am here representing Mr. Richard Muhammad. And our statement to the board is this. We, as a Masjid, do not condone violence in any form, and we will never tolerate the celebration of a despicable and human act as an assassination of a man in front of his wife and children. It was brought to our attention on September 15 that a board member, Mr. Jarvis Karim El Amin, made several outrageous and highly inappropriate comments in reference to the tragic passing of Mr. Kirk. Upon a prompt investigation, the board voted to immediately remove Mr. El Amin from his position and terminate any or current association with Masjid Al Nasr. These comments are not only unacceptable and offensive, but deeply are insensitive regarding a grieving family and a mourning nation. Our nonprofit has spent the last five years working in Sulphur Springs to provide relief to more than 100 families. We have a food pantry that feeds over 400 people. And our press release said three years, but in truth, it started on January, excuse me, April 2020, at the beginning of the pandemic. So it's six summers that we have been working with the youth in our community to provide hope, to provide inspiration. And we emphatically state, we do not in any way, shape, or form are permitted to denigrate the death of any human being, regardless of creed, class, or color. We are a Dawah Mas, meaning we are a community center that outreach. We help black, brown, red, yellow, and white. The only requirement for our services is that you are in need, and our only response is that we will come to you, not only in Sulphur Springs, but we have a mobile pantry. We have been blessed to work for the last two years in our innovative academy to change the lives of over 30 families, not children, but families. Because it was brought to my attention as I closed recently that the days of bringing home books and notepads are not the way that children do their work, but they need laptops, they need computers. And our academy has been blessed to hand out those computers and services to help those families. So I close as I started. We greet you in peace, and we want to make it clear the line of the sand. And I will speak personally for me. I was not raised by my mother and father to denigrate the dead. I was not raised that way. Mr. Richard Muhammad has given me permission to tell you he was not raised that way. So it is not only against the policy of the Masjid, but it's a policy against us as human beings. I hope that you will consider that we have made the right choice in regard to this era, and that era was made by an individual who represented himself and not our community, not our program, and not our Masjid. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, sir. Can you please repeat your name for the record?
My name is Idris Farouk Muhammad. I am the manager of the humanitarian services of Masjid Al Nasr.
Thank you, sir.
We appreciate you taking care of us.
Connie Rose, followed by Jan Edwards, and then Clara Reynolds. Good morning.
Good morning. Hi, I am Connie Rose, and I'm the chair of the Commission on Human Trafficking. Good morning, commissioners. Thank you for your ongoing support of the Commission on Human Trafficking. As an awareness commission, our mission is clear: to prevent exploitation, raise awareness, and strengthen collaboration. And I'm here to share the results of this mission in action. I also would like to take a moment and to thank our Commission on Human Trafficking members and our supporters for being here today. As a survivor of human sex trafficking, I have been engaged in this work since 1988, before we even had a name for it. That experience taught me the importance of prevention, awareness, and collaboration, the very foundation of this commission's work today. We are deliberate in building synergies with our collaborative representatives, aligned identities, the state of Florida and the federal government. Through those partnerships, we ensure efficiencies, avoid duplication, and serve as a connector so efforts complement rather than compete with one another. Our strategic plan focuses on three priorities and more, but the main focus: prevention and awareness, reducing demand through education and cultural change; safe placement in housing, ensuring immediate safe options for survivors after recovery; trauma-informed training, equipping law enforcement, attorney, and advocates with tools to respond efficiently. And a strong example prevention is the Awareness the Don't Buy It Tampa Bay Campaign. Just from May to December, seven months, we generated 24 actionable tips, which led to recovery of three victims, supported 19 closed cases. Five investigations are still open. But beyond those numbers, it has shifted how Hillsborough County frames trafficking as a community issue tied to buyers' behavior, not solely as a victim or law enforcement matter. With your continued support, we will remain focused on awareness, prevention, and collaboration, ensuring that Hillsborough County leads the state, both protecting survivors, disrupting exploitation at its root. Thank you, as Connie Rose and as the chair for the Commission on Human Trafficking.
Thank you. Jan Edwards, followed by Clara Reynolds, and then Lynn Gray. Good morning.
Hi, good morning. My name's Jan Edwards. I'm the president and founder of Paving the Way Foundation, all the way from Orlando. I'm asking you today to continue funding the Don't Buy It Tampa Bay Campaign. As someone who spent a majority of my career in the marketing and advertising business, working for a Fortune 500 company, and now is a subject matter expert in the area of disrupting the cycle of child exploitation through educational programs delivered around the nation, and a member of the Hillsborough County Public School Human Trafficking Task Force, I am uniquely positioned to understand the space enough to speak with you today. While some may consider awareness not the best use of funds, I'm here to dispute that with some facts and food for thought. The Don't Buy It Tampa Bay Campaign started in 2021 for the Super Bowl and has continued over the past four years. It's one of the very first media campaigns in the country to invite the public to take an action locally in preventing trafficking and help saving lives, as it's been demonstrated. Awareness campaigns work. For example, the Online Blue Campaign received more than 2.6 million clicks and over 1,800 calls to the National Trafficking Hotline. The National Center for Missing and Exploited Children received over 100,000 cyber tips of child sexual abuse material every single day. Do you think these kids wake up one morning and just decide to take an inappropriate picture of themselves? It's a rhetorical question. The answer is unequivocally no. Someone showed them, enticed them, or they heard it from a friend. A grassroots awareness campaign, so to speak. This has been and continues to be an effective way to entice our children into harm. Every one of us has been affected by an awareness campaign, from the cars we drive, to the shoes we wear, to the food we eat. Late-night pizza commercials didn't just magically appear one day, there was market research done, and why we can now all order Papa John's at 11:00 p.m. Awareness matters. And this awareness campaign matters even more because it saves lives. The principles of marketing remain regardless of the industry. Target your audience with the right message consistently. And if you think about it, if awareness campaigns were one and done, why do 100-year-old companies like Delta, Coca-Cola, or Colgate continue to buy media? Because it works and to fight off competition. I want you to consider, we are competing with traffickers, pimps, and online predators who wage their own media campaigns in our community, online, at the convenience stores, or at the mall, targeting our children, families with vulnerabilities.
Thank you, Ms. Edwards.
This campaign helps us fight evil. Thank you.
Clara Reynolds, followed by Lynn Gray, and then Drew C. Diaz Phelps. Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, everybody. I'm Clara Reynolds, president and CEO for the Crisis Center of Tampa Bay. And I am grateful for the opportunity to speak today in strong support of the Hillsborough County Commission on Human Trafficking, which is item G4. First, I want to extend my sincere thanks to all of you for your leadership in creating a truly unique, multidisciplinary system right here in our community. By facilitating cross-agency communication and collaboration, you've made it possible for professionals to come together, to work collaboratively, professionals like law enforcement, social services agencies, or advocacy organizations. The approach not only strengthens our collective response, but it also wisely eliminates redundancy and duplication, ensuring that the resources that are used are used where they're needed the most. I also want to highlight the importance of the commission's coordination with the statewide Anti-Trafficking Commission. While that partnership brings essential resources and expertise to our region, our Hillsborough County Commission is uniquely equipped to coalition, is uniquely equipped to address the specific needs of survivors right here in our community. And by tailoring programs and supports to the local community, you're ensuring that survivors in Hillsborough County receive the care and attention they deserve. Furthermore, I fully support the budget funding request of the commission, and specifically the anti-human trafficking campaign. You all just heard all about that campaign. You know it's making a huge impact in our community. But I want to thank you again so much for your commitment to this vital cause and for all you do to keep Hillsborough County safe and compassionate. And I urge you to continue supporting and expanding these efforts, and I'm proud to stand in this fight with you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Reynolds. Lynn Gray, followed by Drew C. Diaz Phelps, and then Dottie Groover Skipper. Good morning.
Good morning. Lynn Gray, Hillsborough County Public School Board Member. And I wanted to say, honorable school board, I mean honorable Board of County Commissioners, thank you for allowing me this opportunity to speak on behalf of the Human Trafficking, the Board of County Commission on Human Trafficking. So I'm here to support the Commission on Human Trafficking. Recently, Tampa, Florida has been rated, unfortunately, number one to three metropolitan city in the nation where human trafficking occurs. The grooming begins on our children's cell phones by social media app applications. As a district-wide school board member, I went ahead and put together the Human Trafficking Task Force in 2017, when some of our students were being abducted off of Saffold, S-A-F-F-O-L-D Road by Shields Elementary, Middle School, excuse me. And it has morphed into a student online safety because the cell phones, as many of you know, who have youth around you, is one of the main conduits of traffickers. I am aware now that peers are trafficking peers. I represent 220,000 students in this district, being countywide. I am worried, I'm fearful, for your nieces, my grandchildren, your nephews, possibly your grandchildren. There's a lot of kids that are being targeted. We are reminded that traffickers are very insidious. They make compelling relationships with our youth and cause irreparable harm, from sextortion, from bullying, and actual trafficking in various locations throughout our Tampa Bay region. Walmart in Miami is known as the number-one center for human traffickers. It has become critical for increased awareness and prevention mechanisms among our students and all your relatives, your younger folks, that we start making them aware of the nefarious social media sites and make them also equally aware of those resources that will help them navigate in case they do get some suspicious communication on their phone. As a call for action, this financial investment to the Commission on Human Trafficking will build, and I've been on that board for a few times and continue, will build a stronger prevention, protection, and placement system to safeguard children and disrupt trafficking at its roots. Commissioner Cepeda, I personally appreciate your furtherance of increasing this budget or future budget ask. Honorable board members, and every one of you, I so thank you for your public service. Your voice, possibly your vote for this future budget request-
Thank you, Ms. Gray.
-will definitely be appreciated. Thank you for your time.
Appreciate your comments. Drew C. Diaz Phelps, followed by Dottie Groover Skipper, and then Jarvis El Amin. Good morning.
Good morning, board members. Thank you so much for the opportunity. As you can see, I don't have anything in front of me to read because I'm going to speak to you from my heart. I am a fourth-generation Tampa native, born here. I am a Tampanian. I'm also with the School District of Hillsborough County, and I am the chair of the Human Trafficking Forum under the leadership of member, board member Lynn Gray. Also, I'm in the capacity of adult education with Hillsborough County Schools because when we talk about- when we talk about human trafficking, it's labor trafficking, sexual trafficking. So it affects the adults also. As being born here in Tampa Bay, I remember driving down Buffalo Avenue. For those that don't know it, it's Martin Luther King. Seeing the steeple at Jesuit High School, seeing the old Sombrero football field, that's now One Buck Place in our Buccaneers. We're number one, but we're also number one in bringing in human trafficking and labor trafficking. I believe and I feel in my heart, it's shameful. You guys are looking at us as your constituents. We are your people. This is your city. When you walk out of this building, turn around and look at people in the face. That person might be a victim of human trafficking, but they're too scared to speak up. We're not looking at wraparound services. Our services are completely different at the school district level, because we are being in there for the children, the custodians, the people that are there, everyone. The Commission that you have needs your approval to continue so that we can have these services. We're working with the Attorney General's Office at the State of Florida. In addition, Member Gray, and we have established number one in the state of Florida for Hillsborough County Public Schools to be in this capacity. Orlando is now copying us. I'm asking that you please consider continuing funding, continue the services that you're doing. And when you walk outside, this is your back door. This is our city, and we cannot let this to continue. We've gone from number three to number one in the United States. Are we proud of this? I know I am not standing here proud of what's happening, but I am asking you to please consider and look around and see what's happening. We need your support. We need your continued support, and I appreciate the time that you're giving me. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate your comments. Dottie Groover Skipper, followed by Jarvis El Amin, and then Megan Amir. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners, and thank you for allowing us the opportunity to speak with you this morning. I'm Dottie Groover Skipper, and I have been in the anti-human trafficking arena for over 40 years, so I do feel like I have skin in the game and that my words matter. Human trafficking is the business of the exploitation of vulnerabilities for another person's gain. Sex trafficking and labor trafficking are the two most prevalent forms of trafficking in the United States, in Florida, and in Hillsborough County. In fact, Florida is third in the nation for human trafficking cases, and in Hillsborough County alone, in fiscal year 2023 through 24, there are 220 trafficking reports, the highest in the state of Florida. Hillsborough County is both a hub of trafficking activity and a leader in recovery efforts, but there are critical gaps. The Commission on Human Trafficking addresses these key gaps in Hillsborough County, identifying urgent needs for community awareness, as Jan had so wonderfully expressed. The reason why we need this community awareness, it does bring in tips to law enforcement, and those tips are able to help victims be recovered and get the services they need. So, community awareness, investment in victims, survivor placement, and emergency housing, and we've identified these key gaps through our strategic plan. The Commission on Human Trafficking is staying true to its mission and purpose, which is to establish those educational programming opportunities for the public and key industries to recognize the indicators and signs of human trafficking, and then also to learn how to report those suspected and that activity back to law enforcement. And we do this a lot through our successful awareness campaign. As Vice Chair of the Commission on Human Trafficking, I want to clarify that we use our budget very responsibly. In an earlier report, it was, it seemed indicated that our funds were not spent completely, and those funds were spent, but they were encumbered but not yet invoiced. So I just wanted to make that clarification. Hillsborough County is Florida's frontline against human trafficking, and a strong financial investment will sustain demand reduction awareness, expand foster-parent training, and guarantee emergency shelter and a road to recovery for rescued victims. So thank you so much for your support and for all the work that y'all do to help keep our community safe.
Thank you, Ms. Groover Skipper. Jarvis El Amin, Megan Amir, followed by Jaslyn Vasquez and a Kella McCaskill. Good morning.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Megan Imar, and I'm the Policy Director for the Council on American Islamic Relations. I am not Muslim, I'm a Christian. So you might ask, why would I work for the Council on American Islamic Relations? It's because me, as a Christian, am sick and tired of Islamophobia and hateful comments put against our Muslim brothers and sisters in this community. So I am very upset to see that the Hillsborough County Commission is singling out our one predominant mosque in this community that serves the African-American community, African-American Muslims, that has a food pantry and does a youth entrepreneurship program, but yet commissioners are putting out ineffectual information to the Hillsborough County young Republicans, stating that the Commission is funding an individual. That individual may or may not have said incorrect comments about Charlie Kirk, but what's important, we are funding a youth entrepreneurship program. This is Islamophobia to specifically single out this one mosque that serves our African-American Muslims here within the community. If the program is not meeting what it's supposed to meet, then there is a proper way to go about that. If they're not training the young entrepreneurs properly, there is a proper procedure to do that. But calling them out publicly on the agenda of a Commission meeting is Islamophobia, and it's inappropriate. So I would like to ask the commissioners to remove this item from the agenda. And again, if the program is not meeting its intended goals, then there are the proper channels to go about that. I would also like to say that I can go to bed at night safe and sound, knowing that I support affordable housing, I support giving funding to religious institutions that help the community and do youth entrepreneurship programs. Other people that do witch hunts such as this unfortunately like to continue funding $200,000 a year to the Florida Israeli Business Accelerator, where you actually fund foreign governments, sorry, foreign companies to actually produce jobs. The Mash Al-Nasser supports this community versus this Commission is currently funding companies such as Extend, an Israeli drone company that's committed war crimes and using its drones to actually target children in Gaza. So if you need to cut funding, because I know that you guys really want to save our taxpayers' dollars, you should be looking at issues such as that. We should not be funding drone companies to be here in Tampa that are foreign government-owned that commit war crimes. Instead, we should be funding like this, programs that actually help the community, that help young entrepreneurs, teach them how to actually do a business and be productive citizens here in Hillsborough County. So again, I'm highly offended that this is even on the agenda, and I hope that it will be taken off the agenda and that you will actually go through the proper channels if a grant is not producing the type of outcomes that you would like to see done, which in this case, I know is not the case. So again, I go to bed at night knowing that I support good programs, and I hope that you will too.
Thank you, Ms. Amir. Jaslyn Vasquez, followed by Kella McCaskill, who's virtual, and then Denise Herndon. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Jaslyn Vasquez, and I currently serve as the Anti-Trafficking Team Supervisor for One More Child here in Tampa, Florida. We are one of many agencies providing services to human trafficking survivors across the state. I oversee a team composed of an advocate, clinician, and survivor mentor, all of which provide services to verified juvenile and adult survivors of human trafficking, in addition to those who may be susceptible to becoming a victim of human trafficking. Prior to my time with One More Child, I worked as a victim advocate for the State Attorney's Office here in Hillsborough County, and then a human trafficking victim advocate for the Florida Human Trafficking Strike Team under the Office of the Attorney General. You could say I've had quite some time working alongside survivors of human trafficking, and it has also given me the opportunity to work alongside law enforcement, local, state, federal prosecutors, the children's network of, the children's network of Hillsborough County nonprofits, all of which are dedicated to combating human trafficking. In addition, being in these spaces has given me the opportunity to discuss the gaps that are present in Hillsborough County. We all can attest there's a lack of resources necessary to fully support survivors, resources that are not just essential but transformative. For instance, safe, trauma-informed shelters and foster homes is one of the most urgently needed yet hardest to secure. Survivors require spaces that are not only physically safe but emotionally safe, trauma-informed, and have the resources that are necessary in order to succeed. Funding dedicated to training and resources for survivor-focused foster homes empowers survivor recovery, but also plays a critical role in preventing a return to exploitation and the frequency of missing runaway children. Secondly, our law enforcement agencies are working tirelessly to combat human trafficking by apprehending individuals who exploit minors and adults in our community. However, they are often faced with answering the question of what to do next when a survivor is recovered. Funding towards safe homes is essential in order to continue to bridge the gap in care and safety. And one practical short-term solution is the use of hotel vouchers. And lastly, our community partners and law enforcement do their best to combat human trafficking every day. However, publicly accessible information and resources on human trafficking is essential to keep the Tampa Bay community informed. By increasing access to educational materials, we can expand the reach of awareness and continue to empower our community to be involved in prevention efforts. All the requests outlined in the Commission on Human Trafficking's budget is a key to breaking cycles, rebuilding lives, and reshaping entire communities. To answer how this impacts Hillsborough County as a whole, resources towards anti-trafficking efforts strengthen the systems that protect our most vulnerable, reduces the risk of exploitation, and builds a more resilient, informed, and united community. Thank you.
Thank you. Kella McCaskill, virtual. Is Ms. McCaskill on the line?
She has not checked in.
Okay, thank you. Denise Herndon, followed by Ahmad Al Coni, and then Gina Dickerson.
I'm Denise Herndon. I'd like to apologize to Commissioner Bowles, he's not even aware of this, but at the town hall meeting last night, I said in front of a few of his upper firemen in that, oh, this is his first time, he'll learn from mistakes. You did better than any other town hall meeting that I went to. By not introducing everybody, people were able to get what they needed done and get out of there. I mentioned this either last year or early this year, I only use the internet at the library. I don't use it on my phone, it hardly ever works. I quit having internet at my home in 2014, when I realized that my son and Sherlene Hammond were involved in the dark web. It's not just social media that they're getting kids, and I'm appalled to hear that public schools are requiring students to have internet and have computers. You need an IntraNet that is only for the school board to keep child predators off of it. It's not just social media. I was told by a neighbor that the house that, at 2005, Camp Florida Road, which used to be Sherlene Hammond's house, was sold for $250,000. Well, Sherlene went around saying that she sold it for 1.2 million. My son says, oh, she sold it for way more than that, but the public records only show I don't know what this, when you Google it, it's not on Zillow, but when my neighbor told me, April 2nd, this house was sold of 2025. And I don't know what's going on there, but this is the house that I'm talking about, or the property. The one that's highlighted in red, son and mother, Marina Taylor and Ted Taylor, have their name on it. I know that I hear and see car hauling trucks. Sherlene Hammond is an owner of Brandon Ford. I don't know, the first meeting that I ever came to was with Wayne and Sherlene Hammond concerning the rezoning of Rotary Camp, because they had bought the house next to them. I don't know what's going on here, but is this market manipulation? I know when I moved into my house, I, when Wes Kearney finally, I couldn't even see the house, cut the vines, I asked if he had a variance in permits, because he's a few feet from the property line. This stuff here says that there's been, since 95, 15 permits. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Ahmad Al Coni, followed by Gina Dickerson.
Good morning. Thank you for having us. I'm Ahmed Al Coni. I'm the Policy Coordinator from the Council on American Islamic Relations. We're here today to strongly oppose the removal of funding from one of our Muslim programs, which has been crucial in serving these diverse communities of Hillsborough County. Muslims in your city make up over 30,000 citizens, and our programs are not only a resource for Muslims, but they're a resource for people of all faiths. These programs provide vital services such as food, shelter, education, and healthcare to residents who need them most. To strip funding based on a single board member's personal political beliefs is a direct violation of free speech. In fact, such actions can be viewed as doxing, targeting individuals, personal opinions, and using those opinions to harm programs that benefit thousands of people here in Tampa. What's even more troubling is the inconsistency in the way these actions are being handled. For example, Senator Randy Fein has been publicly posting about starving children in Gaza, calling for the demolition of entire areas, yet there's been no move to penalize or strip them of their platform. On the other hand, a single statement made by one board member about Charlie Kirk is being used as a justification to strip away crucial funds from a program that serves this very community. In doing so, you're jeopardizing the lives and the livelihoods of thousands of people here in Tampa Bay. We urge you to reconsider your decision today, and don't cut funding for our community and your constituents who depend on these funds. Thank you so much.
Gina Dickerson, followed by Chloe Royal. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Gina Dickerson. I'm a member of the Commission on Human Trafficking. I'm also the Director of Sexual Assault Services at the Crisis Center of Tampa Bay. I'm here today to speak in strong support of continued and expanded support for the Commission on Human Trafficking. Hillsborough County has the highest number of reported human trafficking cases in Florida, 220 cases in fiscal year 23. Recent operations like Summer Shield and Dragon Eye prove what we already know. Our county is on the front line of this crisis. There are multiple gaps in supporting these survivors, including the need for emergency housing. Right now, Florida has only 43 safe house beds statewide. When survivors are recovered during law enforcement operations, many have nowhere safe to go. Without emergency housing, we risk sending them right back into unsafe conditions or losing the opportunity to stabilize them and support prosecution against traffickers. Hotel vouchers and emergency shelter paired with case management and counseling are a lifeline in those first critical hours. The Commission's data-supported request includes funds for emergency housing within a package that balances prevention, survivor care, and placement. This is not just an expense, it's an investment in public safety, in justice, and in giving survivors a real chance at recovery. I urge you to prioritize expanded support, because the need is not hypothetical. It's here, it's growing, and our response must meet the scale of the crisis. Your decision today will determine whether Hillsborough County continues to lead the state, not just in trafficking reports, but in how we respond, with compassion, with accountability, and with the resources survivors truly need. Thank you for your leadership and for supporting the Commission on Human Trafficking's work.
Thank you. Chloe Royal, and then Angelia Valeni, who's virtual. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you for having the opportunity for me to speak today. My name is Chloe Royal, and I'm an outreach advocate with Salah Freedom. Salah Freedom is a nonprofit anti-human trafficking agency, and we serve Hillsborough and Pinellas Counties, Sarasota, and Manatee. I'm here to show my support to approve funding for the Commission on Human Trafficking. I want to speak specifically about the need for funding emergency hotel vouchers for survivors. These vouchers provide immediate shelter when survivors are recovered by law enforcement or escaping on their own. The United Way previously funded these vouchers, but was recently cut. We are seeing a huge gap in services, and we really need the funding to support these hotel rooms. As was previously said, Florida only has 43 safe house beds available. These hotels ensure survivors do not need to return to unsafe conditions and provide safety until placement is found. Please consider to continue funding, and thank you for your support.
Thank you, ma'am. Angelia Valeni, virtual. Is Ms. Valeni on the line?
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Angelia Valeni. I am the Settlement Coordinator for Salah Freedom. I'm also a survivor who was trafficked in Hillsborough County from teenage years on. So I know that the issue happens right here, and I just want to say thank you for your support in combating it. I run a safe house for Salah Freedom in Hillsborough County. I, too, want- I too want to support the Commission on Human Trafficking because those hotel vouchers are vital. Not always do we have the bed space, and they help bridge the gap. So we just want to stand in support of continuing to fund this mission and know how important it is. And I think people miss the fact of, with the prevention, I didn't have that when I was younger, and that would have prevented me from finding myself in trafficking. So all of the programs and the services that are provided from the Commission of Human Trafficking are essential, and they're vital. And when you get to assist that child, that woman, that person, you also are changing the lives of their children, if they're an adult, or a mother, or a father. So I just wanted to show my support on continuing to fund the Commission on Human Trafficking. Thank you.
Thank you. Lynn Lingowski, virtual.
Good morning. Thank you. My name is Lynn Lingowski, and as a 28-year resident of Eastern Hillsborough County, I'm here to support the Commission on Human Trafficking. I am a Community Awareness Liaison in Hillsborough County with Salah Freedom, and in my short time with this awareness team, I've personally seen the need for additional and continued prevention and awareness training. From the foreign exchange host who approached me to let me know that her student was approached at our local mall in Brandon, Florida, to the foster parent whose 17-year-old was being groomed via gaming, trafficking has gone viral, and our use are even a higher risk with the advancements in AI. AI will take trafficking and grooming to a level the likes of which we have never seen. You've heard many others before me say that there are not enough beds, and that is true. There is no survivor who should ever have to wait to reclaim their life. Their continued and additional investments will ensure that Hillsborough County builds a stronger prevention, protection, and placement system to safeguard our men, women, and children, and end trafficking at its root. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. Misty Halsey, that's virtual, and then Celeste Williams. Is Ms. Halsey on the phone?
Hi, my name is Misty Halsey, and I am the Law Enforcement Liaison with Salah Freedom and serve as the Community Advocate with the Hillsborough County Commission on Human Trafficking. I have worked with human trafficking survivors for over a decade and am a survivor myself. In my time working with survivors, we have seen many programs cut or lose funding directly affecting the lives of those who have experienced being a victim of this horrible crime. I request you to continue to support the budget and effort of the Hillsborough Commission on Human Trafficking to fund critically needed support for survivors, law enforcement, and community service providers. As someone who cares deeply about the safety of children and adults in our community, I've seen how important it is to have strong prevention, protection, and placement systems in place. These investments give me hope that Hillsborough County is taking real steps to keep our community safe and stop human trafficking. Thank you for your time this morning and consideration.
All right, thank you. Celeste Williams, followed by Arturo Puckerin. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners and staff. My name is Celeste Williams. I serve on the Hillsborough County Commission on Human Trafficking, and I also work with you through Redefining Refuge, one of our local service providers. I want to be transparent about both roles as I share what we're seeing here in Hillsborough County. I also want to thank the Commission for the continued support of the Commission on Human Trafficking. I'm here to specifically talk on Agenda Item G4, the Commission on Human Trafficking Data-Supervised Budget Family Request. So Hillsborough continues to lead the state, as mentioned, in the number of child trafficking reports. We see the average age is around 12 years old now, so our numbers, our ages are getting lower. In 23, in the year 23 to 24, Hillsborough had 220 trafficking reports, the highest in the state. In the Sun Coast region, including Hillsborough, there were 527 reports, 491 involving commercial sexual exploitation of children, and 36 involving labor trafficking. Over the past year, we've identified 21 crossover youth. These are youth that have had, that are both involved in foster care but also have juvenile justice history. That's 40 or suspected trafficking concerns, and 20 additional community youth with trafficking risks and also DJJ involvement. That's 41 children who would directly benefit from specialized support and coordinated services such as our Human Trafficking Court. What we're seeing is deeply concerning, children with complex trauma shuffled between systems that don't always communicate, and shortage of placements equipped to meet their needs. Just putting face to, putting a face to the crisis, I worked with a bright, young teenage girl, very young. She was entirely groomed online. She wasn't in foster care, no prior history, no history of runs, no drug concerns, and lived at home. An adult male from another state sent her devices, controlled them remotely, and coerced her through a webcam. She never met him at all. So she became vulnerable to the trafficking without ever leaving her home. Another case, same story, she was groomed online, no prior concerns, no history. She wasn't in foster care, no runs, no...
Thank you, Ms. Williams.
Thank you.
Appreciate your comments. The last speaker this morning, Arturo Puckerin. Good morning, sir.
Hey, good morning, everyone. I always have to do my Shaquille O'Neal thing. So, good morning, Board of County Commissioners. My name is Arturo Puckerin, and just last week, I was blessed with the honor to begin serving this great county as the UACDC CEO. Now, I'm personally part of the growing community, one of the fastest-growing in the state, with folks coming from all walks of life and from all walks of this great nation. Now, of course, with an expanding community and expanding population comes expanding community, human services needs. And with such ongoing support and resources for the UACDC to address those needs, we aim to continue in this good work while refraining from duplicating resources or services with strong fiscal responsibility in complementing the county's work in addressing all these various needs. Now, at the UACDC, we recognize that attainable affordable housing and community development at large is among the premier methods of addressing these human services needs. And at the UACDC, we have a strong track record of doing exactly such, approaching nearly three decades. That means we've helped nurture and raise three generations right here in this great community. So I'm here to introduce myself and to make you aware that we are excited to continue in partnership and complement of the great work that this county does, and we're committed to working alongside you in county leadership and community stakeholders at large in ensuring that the good families, friends, and neighbors of Hillsborough County continue to receive the resources and services that we all need to thrive. So, it's nice to meet you. I look forward to working with you all, and thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate the comments. All right, that closes a public comment. Can we have a motion to approve a consent?
So moved.
Second. Commissioner Winstall, second Commissioner Myers, please accord your vote on the consent agenda.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Okay. Bonnie, maybe nine forty-five times certain?
Thank you. We could move to our nine forty-five times certain, which includes Items B6 and B7. The first one is to receive an annual report from the Hillsborough County Sheriff's Office regarding the school speed zone camera, and then B7 will be regarding the red light camera. We have Chief Deputy Frank Lozad here to present these items.
Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Commissioners. This will be a quick annual report on, the first one will be the speed zone cameras. During the reporting period of August 12th, 2024 through July 17th, 2025, the Hillsborough County Sheriff's Office School Zone Camera Enforcement Program issued a total of 5,775 notices of violation, also known as NOVs. Of these, 3,094 NOVs were paid. A total of 68 hearings were scheduled for contested violations only. With five cases being dismissed and 20 cases upheld, additionally, 10 Uniform Traffic citations, also known as UTCs, were issued, and 1,026 NOVs remain pending issuance as a Uniform Traffic Citation as well. The total collected revenue from the program amounted to $310,378, which was distributed as follows. Public Safety Initiative, $120,627. The Florida Department of Revenue, $61,860. FDLE Training, $9,279. County School District, $37,116. The Crossing Guard Program, $15,465. And Red Speed, which is the vendor for this program, $64,953. That concludes the report for the red zone. The red light camera program as follows. During the reporting period from July 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2025, Hillsborough County issued a total of 7,677 notices of violations, also known as NOVs, related to the red light camera enforcement. Of these, 4,651 NOVs were paid, while 35 were contested, 12 of which remained pending, and two were dismissed, and 21 were upheld. In addition, 1,995 NOVs resulted in the issuance of a UTC. With another 38 NOVs still pending, conversion to UTCs. The total revenue collected from paid violations amounted to $639,039. From this amount, $335,889 was remitted to the Florida Department of Revenue, and $303,150 was retained by Hillsborough County. That concludes both reports, Commissioners.
Thank you, sir, for your thorough and concise presentation. Commissioner Winstall?
Yeah, just, I wanted to thank you guys. You reached out to me about changing of the signs. I saw, I was texting Under Sheriff St. John this morning, I saw they were already changed. I'm gonna need to figure out how you got new signs printed and installed so quickly so we can still that. But I think it's much more transparent. I've heard there's gonna be some flashing lights that are also installed so that it's very clear. We saw the articles that came out about the guessing which 20-minute time zone may or may not be happening, and now it's very transparent, and I just encourage everybody to continue to slow down in school zones. We just, we have to protect our children, so I'll move to receive the reports.
Second.
Okay, so we'll, first we'll approve B6. So the motion, Commissioner Winstall, second Commissioner Cameron Cepeda, please accord your vote.
Yes.
Okay, I'll change the vote for you. Commissioner Cameron Cepeda? Okay. Thank you. Motion carried seven to zero.
And a motion for B7?
Move approval.
Second.
Motion, Commissioner Myers, second Commissioner Winstall, for B7. Please accord your vote.
I think so. Motion carried seven to zero.
Okay. Bonnie, next item?
Thank you. The first public hearing is Item D1. This is to accept the Plan Year 2021 Home Investment Partnership Program, American Rescue Plan, a public hearing, adding $15,590. Brenda Valencia from Affordable Housing, the interim director, is here to present this public hearing.
Good morning.
Good morning, everyone. Brenda Valencia, Acting Director, Affordable Housing Services. This is a public hearing to accept comments on the Second Substantial Amendment to the Plan Year 21 Home Investment Partnerships Program, American Rescue Plan Allocation Plan for an additional $15,590 allocated by the Department of Housing and Urban Development. Close the public comment period that began August 31st, 2025, adopt the Second Substantial Amendment to the Plan Year Home ARP Allocation Plan, adding the $15,590 to the plan, authorizing the chair or county administrator to execute the grant agreement with HUD related to the funding as needed and as approved by the county attorney's office. Home ARP funds provide funding for the development and support of affordable housing, tenant-based rental assistance, provision of supportive services, and the acquisition and development of non-congregate shelter units. Hillsborough County is a participating jurisdiction that received a Plan Year 21 allocation of home ARP funds from HUD in the amount of $10,374,531. HUD identified this additional allocation to Hillsborough County. The approval of this agenda item will authorize the acceptance of public comments, close the public comment period, which began on August 31st, 2025, and adopt and approve the Second Substantial Amendment to the Plan Year 21 Home ARP Allocation Plan. Affordable Housing Services has properly noticed the September 17th, 2025, public hearing in the local papers and on the county website. The estimated financial impact of the Second Substantial Amendment to the Plan Year Home ARP Allocation Plan will add the $15,590 to the original grant budget of $10,374,531, revising the budget to $10,390,121. This is a public hearing.
All right, thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone like to speak to the item? Can we have a motion?
Move approval. Second.
Motion, Commissioner Collins, second Commissioner Myers, please accord your vote on D1.
Commissioner Winstall?
Yes.
Okay, I'll edit the vote for you. Motion carried seven to zero.
D2?
Thank you. D2 is another public hearing certifying that the Greater Hillsborough County Fair Association serves as a public purpose. Stephen Grant is here to present this item. This is a public hearing.
Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Stephen Grant, County Extension Director. This public hearing is being held to consider the adoption of a resolution certifying that the Greater Hillsborough County Fair Association Agriculture, Education, and Promotion Facility serves a public purpose as required by State Statute 288.1175. The purpose of this resolution is to allow the Fair Association to complete its application to the Florida Department of Agriculture and Consumer Services to fund facility improvements. This facility provides educational, cultural, and economic benefits to Hillsborough County by promoting agriculture, supporting youth programs such as 4H and FFA, and serving as a community gathering place. Suzanne Holcomb with the Greater Hillsborough County Fair Association is here if there are any questions.
Thank you, sir. This is a public hearing. Anyone like to speak to the item? Can we have a motion?
Second.
Motion, Commissioner Winstall, second Commissioner Myers, please accord your vote on D2.
Motion carried seven to zero.
D3?
Item D3, this is to conduct a public hearing to make final determination on the application from the University of South Florida Medical Response Unit, and Kevin Wagner is here to present this item. We swapped Kevins, didn't we?
Wrong Kevin, yeah. Good morning, Commissioners. Kevin Wagner, Healthcare Services Department. Item D3, this is a public hearing to make the final determination on the application from the University of South Florida, Florida Medical Response Unit, USF, USF MRIU, for Certificate of Public Convenience and Necessity, COPCN. The USF MRIU would operate one basic life support BLS ground ambulance for students, staff, faculty, and guests of the USF Tampa campus. In accordance with Chapter 22, Article 4 of the County Code of Ordinances and Laws, the USF MRIU application has been reviewed by the Hearing Officer and the Emergency Medical Planning Council, EMPOC, EMPOC, and they both recommended issuance of the COPCN certificate. The last step is for the Board to hold its own public hearing today and make final determination approval. This item has no financial impact, and I believe we have a representative from the USF MRIU to speak if there are any questions. This is a public hearing.
All right, thank you, sir. This is a public hearing. Anyone like to speak to this item?
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is...
My name is Austin Jared. I am the EMS commander for the University of South Florida and am here as a representative of the USF Medical Response Unit to voice my support for the granting of the BLS Ground Ambulance COPCN and to answer any questions that you all may have. We believe that the granting of the COPCN will be of tremendous benefit to the university community. And on behalf of all the faculty, staff, students, as well as the paramedics, emergency medical technicians, and emergency medical responders of the Medical Response Unit, just wanted to thank you guys for your time and consideration.
All right, thank you. Anyone else want to speak to the item? If not, can we have a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Motion, Commissioner Collins, second Commissioner Wostol. Please record your vote on D3.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Next item.
Thank you. The next item is Item D4. This is a public hearing to modify the approved list of projects for the Phase 4 of the Community Investment Act, which adds four additional projects. Kevin Bricky will present this. This is a public hearing.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Kevin Bricky, Management and Budget. This is a public hearing to receive public input and discuss modifying the approved list of projects for Phase 4 of the current community investment tax. The meeting was noticed in the Tampa Bay Times. And to adopt the CIT Phase 4 resolution that would add four projects as approved projects for CIT. Three in transportation and one in the fire services program. These projects have tentative funding in the upcoming CIP. This is a public hearing.
All right, thank you. It's a public hearing. Anyone like to speak to this item?
Yes, I would. I'm Denise Herndon. I was against taking this 20% away from the school board for their infrastructure, but since the school board got theirs passed, they should have both passed or they should have both failed. And I highly support fire rescue, especially since I've been a respiratory therapist over 30 years and unable to work because of an awesome miracle God's performing with me and the side effect is a brain injury. All of our medical issues have side effects. We don't have a healthcare system. We have a sick care system. The majority of the main health issues are self-imposed by what the FDA has approved to go into our food, into our water, and into our land. And I don't know if a lot of people are aware of this, but Monsanto and pharmaceutical companies got on the board of the FDA to approve a lot of this stuff. If you're reading the ingredients on a box and you can't pronounce it, you're putting it in your body and this is causing, not everybody gets these issues. Natural flavoring doesn't mean natural flavoring when you see it on an ingredient. I have a book from Chuck's Natural Health Food Store that, and I had gotten this back in the early 90s of all the things and what they could cause. It all depends on our genetic makeup as to whether our body is going to be exposed to these things. Our medical schools are funded mainly by pharmaceutical companies. CDC is mainly funded by pharmaceutical companies. So who are they gonna vote for? As a respiratory therapist, I have never taken a flu shot or a pneumonia shot. I was required to take Whooping Cough when Whooping Cough was going around years ago with children. Well, Denise, you won't be able to work with them. Oh, well, I guess I won't be able to work with them. You'll have to find somebody else. I worked through the Respiratory Agency and I could choose where I worked. And I would never take the COVID shot. I would never go to a doctor and I definitely wouldn't go to a hospital. Doctors are only taught to push a drug or cut it out. Trauma medicine is excellent, but when it comes to the main issues, I could tell you some horror stories in the medical field after being in it over 30 years. It's a money-making thing. And all this transgender stuff, I guarantee they're not making genitals the way God made genitals. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak to this item? Commissioner Wostol?
Thank you. Just if, if staff could get with me and tell me where this is gonna be on racetrack, I would appreciate it. And I, I can't let the item go by without celebrating Van Dyke and Lithia Powne Crest. I mean, I'm surprised Michael Owen and the chair aren't required to get out front and do a jig or something about it, but I will move for approval.
Second.
Well, well stated. Got a motion to approve, Commissioner Wostol, second Commissioner Myers. Please record your vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
G1?
G1, perfect timing, Commissioners, which is 10:15 time certain. This is to receive a report regarding updates on the newly planned toll road along US Highway 31 and the Riverview Community Plan. We have special appearance by Greg Slater, Executive Director, Chief Executive Officer of the Tampa Hills Rural County Expressway Authority. And then Jay Collins from the Planning Commission is here as well.
Good morning, Mr. Slater.
Good morning, Chair Hagan, vice-chairman Miller, members of the commission. Great to be here this morning. Just want to provide an update on all the hard work that our team has been doing on this project and really talk about what we've heard, what we've learned, and really what's next. Following me, Mr. Jay Collins will come up from the Planning Commission. We're working very closely together on a lot of these efforts. The first thing we found when we started to look at the traffic was really no surprise. We, we saw the traffic kind of getting to a level of saturation, starting to expand a little bit more. We also found that toll road capacity could provide 30% more trips through the corridor while reducing delays at those intersections, which is specifically where we're starting to see some of those challenges by, at 46%, reducing delays at 46%. Toll road could reduce delay by 33 to 35% on an at-grade US 301. So the further south you get, we can get off of a structure with a solution. We are working very, very closely, not only with the county, with the Planning Commission, but with FDOT as well. The system has to work continuously together when you look at 41 and 75 and 301 and how they all work in conjunction with each other. You know, the express lanes, in the early modeling, we're finding when you come from Big Bend Road to the expressway could save 62 minutes. This is really based on kind of future traffic, 2045 levels. From Gibsonton to the expressway, 36 minutes. And then from Bloomingdale to the expressway, 12 minutes. Let me break that down a little bit in terms of morning and evening. The trip, if we do nothing in the no-build scenario, we found that the trip from Big Bend Road to the, to the entrance to the expressway out towards Brandon would take about 77 minutes. And with the express lanes, it could be a trip that's 15 minutes or less because it's limited access. Serving those through trips, very much like the Gandy extension did when we built that one, serving those through trips and then giving that local roadway back to those business access. And one of the things that we found in terms of the growth out there was, you know, congestion does get to a point where it's at a level of saturation, so the peak hour just gets longer. It doesn't get worse. So that's what you're starting to see there with that 77-minute trip is the congestion growing to that point. From Gibsonton, 44 minutes. It's a little bit different when it comes to the evening, 41 minutes. We see a heavy commute north in the morning and a heavy commute south in the evening. Large amounts of that traffic are coming from the east of 301 and then entering and going north. So, you know, heavy, heavy patterns that offer a variety of solutions. From a safety perspective, we did look pretty significantly at the crash data up and down that corridor. A large portion of the crashes in that corridor were happening at the intersections. We did have 25 fatalities, including three pedestrian fatalities and one bike fatality over a five-year period. So those are significant numbers when it comes to these roadways. And one of those things, one of the things that I would suggest based on my experience is sometimes these issues are related to the congestion that you're seeing. People get frustrated and they start to kind of drive in different ways and, and it creates some safety challenges. Predominant type of crashes, half, just about half of them are rear-end crashes. That's, that's very related to congestion. Side swipe crashes and left turn crashes. So people trying to find gaps at the intersections at high speeds. We've been out in the community a lot over the last year or so. We did some surveys. We found 95% support of the project. I want to be really clear, you know, that's just people are supporting some relief. You know, the opinions may change. The opinions may get a little more detailed once we start offering what those real solutions look like. But certainly we're hearing from the community down there that they support some sort of traffic relief. We've been in front of five HOAs. We had three public workshops back in December of '24 and we've been collaborating very closely with Planned Hillsborough on the community meetings and then working with them in Valrico and Riverview. The comments that we've heard so far are not surprising. One, hurry up and build it. Can you go faster? Can you go further? You know, those types of, of comments that we hear. A lot of concerns about the traffic and causing accidents. A lot of support. We need to understand what the east-west connections may be. And we also need to understand how to build a solution that doesn't impact the business community down there, minimizes noise, and is a positive impact on the community. So that's really where we're focused today. As we go into the next phase, the official kind of PDNE portion, which runs through a federal process. We want to go through a federal process so that we can have federal financing arms available to us when we start to bond these solutions out. So that'll take a, a year or so to go through that process. But that's when we're really gonna start to see the solutions, what they look like, what the entrance points may look like, what the exit points may look like, and, and what that actual solution may look like. So we'll be out in the community again. So I am happy to take any questions, but I'm also happy to wait until Mr. Collins is done and we can take them together.
Thank you, sir. Why don't we hear from Mr. Collins? Good morning.
Yes, good afternoon or good morning, Jay Collins, Planning Commission staff. Mr. Slater did a wonderful job talking about some of the transportation in the area. So let's continue and let's talk about land use. That's the relationship that we should all be aware of, transportation and land use within the communities of Riverview. So specifically, this board asked us to update the Riverview Community Plan in conjunction with THEA back in February of 2024. And so this presentation gives you a bit of an update of where we are so far with that. Riverview's Community Plan was adopted in 2005, has 13 goals and strategies. You can see the outline there. That is the area that is the adopted Riverview Community Plan. Currently, there are well over 100,000 people that live in this area. So one of the first things that we always like to talk about is what a community plan is not. It does not allocate funding for infrastructure needs, right? Mr. Slater just talked about something that will cost billions of dollars for the infrastructure to actually provide that facility enhancement. That is not something that the community plan actually looks for funding for things like that. It can certainly talk about the priorities of the community, but it does not allocate any funding. Also, by design, we do not generally talk about a property's land use or zoning to change it. What we do, and in this case you have that, is there is some zoning specifically to US 301 that talks about scale, height, bulk, mass. And that is something that we obviously need to have conversations with the community and with Mr. Slater and his folks, and also eventually with Mr. Gormley and Development Services, because if we do a facility enhancement on US 301, that may change the way in which development in the future is looked at for US 301. And also, it does not affect your school district addresses, zip code, or taxing information. So just a little background of where we've been. Again, February of 2024, we started this. We've been doing data collection. We've been working with THEA on some of its initial listening sessions, which were well received in the community. March of this year, we had our own community meetings. We've had some surveys. We're gonna talk a little bit about some of those surveys and how they build into the planning process to update this community plan. Where we are this year, we continue to gather some of that data. We have community meetings in October. I'll go a little bit into that. We have a slide on that. And we will also have additional surveys. This is not the end of our public engagement. We are only in the middle of our public engagement. We will be back out in the community in 2026. Prior to us drafting any language that will then go in front of you, because again, this is a comprehensive plan amendment. This would go through a transmittal and adoption hearing in front of this board as well as go in front of the Planning Commission. So this is some of our survey results. I'm briefly just gonna talk about what we did. SWOT, Strength, Weaknesses, Opportunities, and Threats, as well as some general questions about US 301. I'd like to talk about the SWOT for a minute. As you can see on the slide here, if you see the same general grouping of words that appear on more than one of those squares, such as infrastructure and public services or economic development, that is paramount to the community and it is something that we have to take special attention to and look at as we actually work within the goals and the strategies for this community. Because it means that this community is coming at those items and issues from a level of strength, a level of weakness, a level of opportunity, and a level of threat within their community. So our last slide. Again, we will be back out in the community. October 9th, we have a virtual meeting. October the 11th, please come out and hang with us at the river in the morning on that Saturday from 11:00 to 1:00. And then October the 14th, after your day of work or after your day of school, please come see us at the YMCA down there at Big Bend, just off of the interstate. So this concludes my presentation. I thank you for your time. Mr. Slater, myself, and staff are available for any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Commissioner Cameron Cepeda?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Collins, and thank you, Mr. Slater, for your presentation and for THEA's continued commitment to proactive transportation planning in Hillsborough County. As both the county commissioner and a THEA board member, I appreciate the thoughtful collaboration behind the project. And also, we all know that South County is one of the fastest-growing parts in Hillsborough County, and the data from the pre-PDNE study makes it clear that congestion is not only an inconvenience, it's a safety issue as well. And if we do nothing, delays and safety risk will only worsen. And a modern, thoughtful planned toll facility, like the proposed settlement extension, gives us a real opportunity to address those issues. And also, I'd like to add that if we did nothing, that short commute in the near future would take 77 minutes. But with the planned toll road, would cut that down to only 15 minutes, which is really, really awesome, amazing for the commuters. And also, this project has the potential to be transformative for South County. And I look forward to the continued collaboration between THEA, our county planning departments, and most importantly, the residents in the surrounding communities. And thank you very much. Appreciate you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioner Wostol?
Thank you, Ms. Chair. Director Slater, I, I have gotten to know you as a thoughtful servant leader, but people down there don't have that privilege. So I know that you're gonna do a good job and I know that businesses along the Gandy would, would say he did a good job and removed our concerns. There's a couple of organizations on 301 I'm gonna just send to you. Coincidentally, they were at two of the intersections that you put on there that have the worst wrecks. They're just worried about, hey, I sit right on 301. What's that gonna mean for me? And I, I know that, I know that you can give them the most thoughtful answer. So I'm, I'm gonna send those to you. But anybody that is interested in this and watches it, I wanted them to hear my words, that I, I know that you are not just going to go in there and plop up a concrete structure and not talk to them, and I, I want them to hear those words. I know that, that SWOT presentation was, was given. I don't know the formulas that they, they use to derive that, but what I would say is that 20 years ago, former Commissioner Joe Chalura, to my understanding, actually proposed an extension down into the South County area. And when those things, and that's because at that time they were doing all of the planning and they were updating the future land use, which was, which was always predicting all this growth there. It's a surprise to everyone now, but it was always planned for down there. And I would hope that when we're considering those threats, that we look 20 years in the rear and say, well, the, the real threat was us not doing it then. And that we cannot ignore this need any longer. So I will move to receive the report, since I don't see anyone else.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion to receive the report by Commissioner Wostol, second Commissioner Myers. Please record your vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Bonnie, next item?
Yes, our next item is 10:30. Item B1, to accept the 2026 Annual Audit Plan. Melinda Gensarli is here to present this report. I was stalling for two minutes, but do you need to waive your rules, too?
It's not a public hearing, so.
Okay, very good.
Okay, good morning.
All right, good morning, Commissioners. I'm Melinda Gensarli, County Internal Auditor, and I'm here today to present and request the board to accept the 2026 Annual Audit Plan. I do have a very brief presentation for you to provide you with just a high-level overview of the risk assessment and planning process followed to develop the plan. So a comprehensive risk assessment and planning process was developed to really optimize the resources within the County Internal Auditor's office across a broad range of auditable areas within the organizational framework of the Board of County Commissioners. This strategic process was conducted in conformance with the global internal audit standards. And then the methodology of selecting audits, advisory, and other audit services is included in the County Internal- is included in the County Internal Auditor's 2026 Annual Audit Plan Report, which is included with this agenda item. The 2026 Annual Audit Plan is really a planning tool for use of resources. As such, it is subject to change throughout the year as the auditable environment changes. Any minor changes to the plan will be notified to the board. Anything more material in nature will be presented to the board for input and approval. On August 28th, the County Internal Audit Committee met, and they were provided with a detailed presentation on the risk assessment and planning process performed. They asked questions and provided input, and then they ultimately determined that the County Internal Auditor performed an annual risk assessment based on her own judgment of risks after considering input from senior management, the commissioners, and then other internal and external providers of assurance and consulting services. They also determined that the 2026 Annual Audit Plan, the resources required to achieve it, are available within our office. Therefore, they determined that pursuant to Resolution R20-011, that the Audit Committee recommends the Board of County Commissioners to accept the 2026 Annual Audit Plan. And here we have the recommended 2026 Annual Audit Plan that was discussed with the Commissioners before today's meeting. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have before requesting the board to accept the 2026 Annual Audit Plan.
Thank you very much for the presentation. I don't see anyone in the queue, so can we have a motion to accept?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion, Commissioner Myers, second Commissioner Wollstill, to accept the 2026 Annual Audit Plan. Please accord your vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Okay, thank you. Next item?
Thank you. The next item, we can move to the regular agenda. The first item is Item B2. This is to approve the letters of agreement with the Florida Agency for Healthcare Administration, known as ACHA, for participation in the direct payment program. Kevin Wagner is here to present this item.
Good morning, Commissioners. Kevin Wagner, Healthcare Services Department. Again, as Bonnie indicated, Item B2 asks the board to approve the letters of agreement, LOAs, with the Florida Agency for Healthcare Administration, ACHA, for participation in the directed payment program. This program provides supplemental payments from the federal government to eligible hospitals that provide services to the managed Medicare recipients in the total amount not to exceed The hospital-directed payment program offers an opportunity to leverage federal dollars to increase Medicaid managed care payments to these hospitals providing care for the Medicaid patients. Section 409.908, subsection 26 of the Florida statute, requires that ACHA receives the letters of agreement by October 1 of each year. There is no funding associated with approval of this item, as the required funding for these LOAs is anticipated to be collected from the hospitals. The imposition of the non-advalorem special assessment pursuant to Assessment Resolution R25-033 was approved by the Board of County Commissioners in July of 2025, following a public hearing, as authorized under County Ordinance 25-40. No county funds are required for this item. Staff recommends approval of this item.
Thank you, sir. Can we have a motion?
Move for approval.
Motion, Commissioner Myers, second Commissioner Miller, please accord your vote on B2.
Commissioner Miller? Oh, thank you. Motion carried seven to zero.
B3?
Thank you. Item B3 is to provide funding for the Tampa Metropolitan Area YMCA for reimbursement for construction costs of their gym expansion in Riverview. Kevin Brickie will present this item.
Good morning.
Good morning again, Commissioners. Kevin Brickie, Management and Budget. B3 asks you to approve a resolution allocating up to $1 million in funding, $250,000 this fiscal year, and $250,000 each in future years, '26, '27, and '28, for the Tampa Metropolitan Area Young Men's Christian Association, the YMCA, for reimbursement of construction costs for the YMCA's gym expansion. The project is a new 18,000-square-foot indoor gymnasium. And in exchange, the Y is providing vouchers of equal value for distribution of families and individuals that the county identifies as eligible for membership and other things. Also, to approve the related funding agreement, which includes the in-kind services agreement, and that funding agreement would permit the payment of previously expended costs for this project.
Okay, thank you. Can we have a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion, Commissioner Myers, second Commissioner Cohen. I just want to say that we have a longstanding relationship with the YMCA, and as Kevin mentioned, we always ensure that there's a public purpose associated with our funding, and the vouchers are a way to address that. So a motion, a second. Please accord your vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
B4?
Thank you. The next item is Item B4. This is to award and execute a 15-year agreement with the highest-ranked firm Waste Management, Inc. of Florida, for the processing and marketing of the collected single-stream program materials for the solid waste department. Scott Stromer with Procurement Services is here to present this item.
Good morning, Kevin.
Good morning. Scott Stromer, Procurement Services. Again, Item B4 is asking the board to award and execute a 15-year agreement with the highest-ranked firm Waste Management Incorporated of Florida for processing and marketing of collected single-stream program materials for the solid waste management department at a total cost of approximately $70 million, or about $4.6 million per year in processing fees. In addition to the revenue sharing prescribed in the agreement, the recommended firm will provide a guaranteed minimum of $500,000 per year in hosting fees when revenue is received, when other agencies use our facility. The subject contract provides for two additional five-year renewal periods upon mutual agreement of the parties. With that, Procurement Services does recommend approval.
All right, thank you. I don't see anyone in the queue, so can we have a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion, Commissioner Myers, second Commissioner Cohen, please accord your vote on B4.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Next item?
Thank you. The next item is Item B5. This is to approve a second modification to the progressive design-build agreement for the One Water Project for the South Waste Water Conveyance and Treatment Project. Lisa Ray with Waters Resources will present this item.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Thank you for having me here today. I do have a short presentation as well, but Item B5 is to ask your approval for the second modification to the progressive design-build agreement with Garni Companies for the One Water South Waste Water Conveyance and Treatment Project. This will increase the existing contract amount by $64,581,816.94. It also modifies the insurance requirement. As we move into construction, insurance becomes a necessary change. And we are also asking for approval for our fiscal year '25 budget amendment resolution to realign some funds within the Water Resources Department. This realignment does not change or impact the fiscal year '25 capital improvement budget. So I just want to take a minute to remind you about the One Water Waste Water Program. We did talk about it during the CIP meetings this summer. This is a very large infrastructure project that we have for the south-central area. And as you heard when we were talking about the transportation a few minutes ago, there has been a lot of growth within the area. As part of the project, we will be building a new wastewater treatment plant, a necessary super pump station that'll pump over 22 million gallons per day, and the necessary pipe work to support it. This is, in fact, the largest capital project that the county has undertaken. We are delivering this using a progressive design-build method. So to date, we have had approval for Phases 1A and 1B. In that, we have been able to complete design on several segments of pipe, as well as establish the basis of design for the wastewater treatment plant, and we're at about 60%, maybe approaching 90 now, on the super pump station. We've been able to purchase long-lead items in coordinating with procurement. We are using an owner-direct purchase approach that has saved us almost $1 million in taxes. So we'll be able to continue doing that as we move forward. Now, this contract modification starts taking us into the actual construction activities. We'll be finishing up design, and this is the beauty of a progressive design-build approach. You can continue to do design while you start construction. It allows us to expedite our schedule. So as we move forward with this, we're going to be starting to see some construction right along Baum Road, and if you look on the screen, there's a small circle next to some ELAP property, and it goes through a property that's owned by the county. So this initial work will be done on county-owned property, whether it's ELAP, water resources, or other. At this point, we are at about a 7.83% DM, DWBE participation, and that's based on actual invoices paid. However, the overall goal is higher than that, and they continue to work towards achieving it. Moving forward, since it is a progressive design-build, we will be coming to you with additional GMP packages. This outlines when we anticipate the packages coming to you, and these are based on when the design has progressed to the point where the contractor is able to put together sufficient bid documents, because the different services are bid out prior to being put into a GMP and brought to the board for approval. So with that, I do ask for your approval on this agenda item, along with the budget amendment, and am available to answer any questions. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I don't see anyone in the queue, so can we have a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion, Commissioner Cohen, second Commissioner Wollstill, please accord your vote on B5.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Next item?
We can now move to the F-items, the Commissioners section. The first one is Commissioner Bowles, Item F1, to approve a revision to the board policy regarding nonprofit funding guidelines.
Commissioner Bowles?
Good morning. So as we all are aware, we've had some background stuff that was performed on this that took a lot of time and effort. There's a lot of data out there, and there was a lot of time expended on this, and there was some overlap with some of that. And there's two things that are actually in this motion. One is to further clarify that those agreements which we have with nonprofits, where we are essentially the landlord and they are a renter, is not kind of the same thing that we're looking for for those who are in the county facilities. And the second was is that the University, UACDC, and we saw the current CEO that came before us, there was an agreement that was reached in December that wasn't fully contemplated with the changes in my discussions with staff. And to correct that error, we would, we remiss if we paid the full amount that we were paying before without considering the fact that they are not providing the services that they are not providing now. And it's only because of an agreement that was reached with UACDC to transfer those over to Parks and Rec and to County Services.
Okay, so can we have a motion? Motion, Commissioner Myers, second Commissioner Wollstill. I don't see anyone in the queue. Please accord your vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Next item?
Thank you. The next item is Commissioner Cohen's item, Item F2, to direct the County Attorney's Office to draft an amendment to the Hillsborough County Trespass Towing Mobilization and Rate Ordinances.
Commissioner Cohen?
Thank you very much. As the board is aware, we've made major updates to our trespass towing and mobilization rates ordinance. And as is the case many times when we pass these things, we need to go back and clean a few things up prior to it being able to be enforced. And so what this motion does is I'm going to make a motion to ask the County Attorney's Office to draft an amendment to the ordinance with, essentially, is going to look at Section 50-181F to eliminate the 15-minute requirement, as well as the authorization requirement, and also give board members a chance to weigh in with staff if there's any other tweaks that need to be made prior to bringing this forward in a public hearing. So because of the fact that enforcement is waiting on this action being taken, I would like to make a motion to ask the County Attorney's Office to bring this back to us for a public hearing at our October 15th meeting.
Second.
Can we get a motion by Commissioner Cohen, second Commissioner Wollstill? Commissioner Wollstill?
You kind of, you granted me a relief I was going to ask for. There seemed to be, oh, there seemed to be some miscommunications, I think, and I'm going to be asking them, so another commissioner has to double-work for Section 50-192, specifically the 365-day rule. There seems to be some concerns about, and some other various items. And honestly, the first time around, I just said, hey, this is Harry's item, and I'm just going to vote yes to support him. No one said no. No one came and disagreed, so I just went with it, but I'm happy to offer any amendments to help.
Thank you. And my motion was designed to allow for those sorts of tweaks to be made, and if any other commissioners need to do that, they can talk to the County Attorney's Office. And again, appreciate everyone's support in bringing this forward so we can move along.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Please accord your vote.
Aye.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Bowles? Yes, I'll edit the vote for you?
Yes, thank you.
Commissioner Cohen?
Yes.
All right, I'll edit the vote for you. All right. Motion carried seven to zero.
Thank you very much.
Next item?
Thank you. Next, Commissioner Myers has two items, the first one being F3, to approve for inclusion in the fiscal year '26 budget, the reallocation of $5,000.
Commissioner Myers?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My motion is to approve, to reallocate $5,000 from the Commissioners' flag funding for the Veterans Council of Hillsborough County to Family Lee, Inc. Be Out Day.
Okay, we've got a motion by Commissioner Myers. Do we have a second? Second, Commissioner Miller. Don't see anyone in the queue. Please accord your vote on F3.
Commissioner Wollstill? Thank you. Motion carried seven to zero.
F4?
F4 is to move for the approval of a one-time carryfora funds of $20,500 for Grow My Givens, which is included in the adopted FY '26 budget.
We've got a motion by Commissioner Myers, second Commissioner Cohen. Please accord your vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Bonnie, next item?
Thank you. And the last Commissioner item is Commissioner Wollstill, which is Item F5, to rescind all remaining current and future funding that has been allocated to Mesjida and D'Star.
Commissioner Wollstill?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll keep my comments brief. Freedom of speech is the crown jewel of America, and coincidentally, today is Constitution Day. I don't trust anybody in government at the federal, state, or local level, including myself, to define what is considered hate speech or free speech. That being said, when you receive the property taxes of Hillsborough County residents, you are binding yourself to be an extension of them, and you have a certain level of accountability. All of that withstanding, I sincerely appreciate the organization's management showing up today and taking swift action. This nation has been met with a litany of violence, and I have never in my life expected that it would be celebrated in such an egregious fashion and offer justifications attacking our social construct at its core. This item was previously flagged at the last DOGE Committee individually as one of the organizations that our appointed DOGE Committee will be reviewing. So with that in mind, I will be moving to lay this item on the table indefinitely, pending their review.
Okay, we've got a motion by Commissioner Wollstill to essentially lay it on the table. Rick, you want to clarify that?
Yeah. That just means it's postponed indefinitely, more or less. It's laid on the table, so maybe I'll have to bring it back at some future date.
Okay.
Anytime.
A second.
Okay, we've got a motion by Commissioner Wollstill, second Commissioner Miller, Commissioner Myers.
Yes. I'd like to speak to this item. I don't think this item need to be laid I don't think this item need to be laid on the table. The organization came in this morning to represent the chairman and spoke of the services that are being provided to our youth, to families in the community. So we should not punish them because the individual that was referenced has been removed from the board. And what we'll be doing now with laying this on the table is holding up their FY '26 funding, which begins within two weeks.
A point of order. That is, that is.
I have the floor.
Go ahead, Commissioner Myers.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. So we don't need to delay this. Our fiscal year is upon us. We want to continue the services. Suffer Springs in our community is one of the poorest communities where families will be looking for these services.
Again, point of information.
There's no point of order, sir.
Commissioner Wostel, the chair has to.
And I did not interrupt you, and I don't want you to continue to interrupt me.
What you're saying is.
You're not, I didn't ask you your opinion.
Hold on. The chair has to recognize you. Commissioner Myers?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Well, then I appeal the decision of the chair. Because.
Listen, there's no need.
Please be quiet. Rick, am I correct? The chair has to recognize?
That's correct.
Okay. Commissioner Wostel wants to make.
Not my appeal.
And on appeal, he's correct. His appeal, you would have to recognize him, take a vote on it.
Okay, well, Commissioner Wostel?
Yeah, I appeal the decision of the chair. This is a clear misinformation of what a laying on the table indefinitely accomplishes, and that should be cleared up as a clear point of information that I have been refused to be acknowledged on.
Okay, so it's a motion by Commissioner Wostel. Is there a second? Okay, motion dies for lack of a second. Okay, Commissioner Cameron Sepeda, second in the motion. Please accord your vote.
Can we get a clarification, Chair? Are we voting on the appeal? Are we voting on laying it on the table? What are we voting on here?
We're voting on the appeal.
Commissioner Bowles? Yep, there you go. Motion carried five to two. Commissioners Hagan and Myers voted no.
Okay, Commissioner Wostel?
Can our parliamentarian please make very clear that this is not delaying their budgetary item? A laying on the table indefinitely is essentially killing the item.
Yes, I mean, that is a correct statement.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner Myers, please continue.
Mr. Parliamentarian, you said it's delaying on the table, it's killing the item?
Yes, this item, to rescind.
To rescind? So when does that mean the item will come back? Because he said depending on the DOGE, so we don't know when that's going to occur.
Any member at any time could bring it back.
Anytime, but when?
Whenever somebody on this board wants to bring it back.
So in other words, you're saying it can come back at our next board meeting?
Certainly.
It makes no sense. Come on. It makes no sense. Why do we have to bring it back? I mean, the organization has spoken. So why we want to delay, I'm going to talk to my other fellow board members, because I already know one of my board members is not in support of this. So all we're trying to do is make sure that families and children who are receiving for education experience, food, and all, that this program be continued. It was my flag item. I funded it for the past two or three years, and there's not have been any questions of the services being provided in this community. And today, we're about a comment that was made. We accepted, hopefully, that the individual has been removed from the board, so why are we going to penalize the organization? Penalize the organization by laying it on the table and delaying it?
Are you asking me?
No, I'm not even asking you anything.
Okay.
Just because I'm looking. I'm not asking.
I'm going to end up answering you.
Hold on, Commissioner Wostel.
I just want us to do what is right. It's all about the organization and having their funding continued come October 1, because our next board meeting is after October 1.
Commissioner Cohen?
So my first question of the parliamentarian, and I think we should clear this up, is that if laying on the table essentially kills it, that means their funding would be in place for the next fiscal year unless someone made a motion and that motion actually got the votes to bring it back. Otherwise, they're clear to move on from this meeting without any anvil over their head, correct?
That's absolutely correct.
Okay. I just want to say a couple things for the record since this discussion started. The first is that I always feel like it's very important to give deference to Commissioner flag items. This is not something that's in the regular budget. It was a flag that we voted on. Fortunately or unfortunately for the conversation, I'm very familiar with this organization. I've known Idris for many years. They are a food bank. They feed people, and they do a lot of really good work in the community. Recently, I worked with him, and we took some students to see The Lion King at the Strad Center through a program that they have there, making tickets available to our youth. My understanding of laying it on the table is that it's essentially gone. And so, you know, I think it's okay because it will ultimately kill it. But I want to be very clear that I think the organization acted very responsibly in this situation. The speech that was in question, which I didn't see until the agenda item came up, was totally reprehensible and unacceptable, and any praising of violence or murder absolutely should be condemned in every quarter. My read of it, though, is that the organization stepped up immediately to deal with it. They had a program of due process. They removed the offending individual and made it very clear that they disavowed the statement. And because of that, I am certainly in favor of continuing their funding for the important work that they do. But I think we can vote for Commissioner Wostel's motion to do that because essentially it kills the item. So I just wanted to make that clear. Thank you.
Commissioner Wostel?
This is a very basic Robert rules of order, and the way that you talked to me, Commissioner Myers, I have to remind you, a quarter million residents of Hillsborough County gave me permission to speak here. I don't need you to ask me. Very disrespectful. The DOGE Committee reference, I voted against the DOGE Committee because I thought that it was unnecessary. You voted for the DOGE Committee. The DOGE Committee has already, at the previous DOGE Committee meeting, singled this individual organization out for review. You voted for them. We don't know what they're going to bring. I'm letting you know that it might come back. I yield.
Okay, so there's a motion on the floor by Commissioner Wostel. Who was the second from? Commissioner Miller? Give me a couple of comments real quick. First of all, I agree with Commissioner Wostel's introductory comments regarding free speech. The gentleman that made the comments was actually, I think, the campaign manager for my last opponent, so you would think that I have every reason to take action. Mr. Elamine's comments were important. However, as the speaker this morning indicated, he was speaking for himself, not the organization. As a result, the organization took immediate action against him, removing him from his position, terminating any current or future association. As was stated, this organization focuses on youth outreach, food security, community upliftment, and I'm reluctant to penalize the youth that benefit from their youth programs as well as our community, that many that can eat because of the food this organization serves due to one individual making asinine and offensive comments. I just want to remind everyone that we already voted to have this funding in the budget. However, with every nonprofit, it requires a contract to come back before the board to approve the funding. So the way my position was, if anything between now and then comes up that suggests the organization shares these violent and important beliefs, or if we find out from DOGE Committee or anyone else that they're operating inappropriately, I'll be the first one to rescind the funding. But with all that said, the motion on the floor, again, suspends it. Correct?
Correct, indefinitely, yeah.
Okay. So I will support it. Motion, Commissioner Wostel, second Commissioner Miller. Please accord your vote.
I want to ask a point of clarification. Mr. Chair going to be recognized?
Sure.
So we said suspend the lay it on the table, but a commissioner has to bring this item back?
No.
No. So in other words, you're saying that the funding will occur October 1? Is that correct? I just want to be clear.
Yes.
No interruption of service?
Yes.
Okay.
Please accord your vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Okay, next item?
The next item is item G2. This is a staff report regarding, a report on the county attorney's office, from the county attorney's office, regarding pickleball lawsuits. Cameron Clark from the county attorney's office is here, and Adam Gormley as well.
Good morning, Cameron.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Good morning, board members. Cameron Clark, Assistant County Attorney. This item is a report requested by the board on August 20 regarding pickleball courts in the vicinity of residential uses. Recommend motions to receive the report, and we're here to take any questions at Jim Harris. Thank you.
Okay. Do we have any questions or comments on the report? If not, Commissioner Wostel?
Has everybody had an opportunity to read it? I would like to just have, has everybody briefly went over it? I know that this motion failed four to three at the last board meeting or two board meetings ago. But in light of new information, I really feel like we have to reconsider our position, particularly in light of the fact that another jurisdiction has already coincidentally now done the exact same thing that I was looking to accomplish, in light of the fact that there is an option for relief to the commissioners prior to any litigation making it to court that would relieve us of any potential penalties. And third, in light of the fact that there is now, just as predicted, a growing number of lawsuits that I really feel like is our responsibility to, is a proper function and role of government, to prevent our community from being intertwined unnecessarily in litigation when we could offer a brief temporary safety measure. So I want to ask that we look back at that vote. I want to ask that we, I need four votes, unfortunately, to get an attorney general's opinion. I want to ask the attorney general for them to give an opinion if they felt like SB 180 really applied to pickleball courts. I know that if we get the votes, I can, I can ask his office directly to actually make that decision. And I think that those are reasonable things where we can get an AGO opinion on this. We've done it in the past for various things. I've read some of the county's AGO opinions. I believe that we could offer them the relief, and then if, if somebody feels so moved that they must put a pickleball court 72 feet from a Vietnam Top Gun veteran's house, then we can bring the item back and remove the changes. And that we do have what is called, I'm going to read it to you specifically, a zoning in progress, which we've done before, which will offer some protections to make sure that we don't get a flood of these for people that would, for some reason, like to inconvenience someone's neighbor by placing a very loud pickleball court, which there are numerous studies from qualified professionals that say that it absolutely has a medical impact to people because of the extraordinary volume increases. So I would, I would just like to have a conversation.
Second.
Okay.
Do you know what you're seconding?
He's asking for an attorney general's opinion. That's what I seconded.
Okay.
That I'm asking, you're asking for an attorney general's opinion.
I will first ask for the attorney, I will motion to ask for attorney's general's opinion on, I believe the county attorney has to write the opinion that SB 180 was not intended to prevent noise changes for pickleball courts, essentially. That is the motion.
And Commissioner Cohen, I wasn't being a smart aleck.
No, no, no.
I support the requesting the AGO opinion, but I probably won't go further than that, so I just wanted to clarify that. So, okay, so the motion is to ask for an AGO opinion by Commissioner Wostel, second Commissioner Cohen. Don't see anyone else in the queue. Please accord your vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Commissioner Wostel?
Okay, thank you. And my second one, which will effectively kill the third one because it would require, if it fails, because I would require a third motion to set the public hearings, right? So I'd have to get the second one to pass, which is to invoke a pending ordinance doctrine.
Yeah, you could actually do it in one. You know, the issue is whether anybody is supportive of starting legislation to put separation requirements and in spite of Senate Bill 180.
Okay. In light of the new findings, I motion to invoke the pending ordinance doctrine and declare a zoning in progress regarding pickleball courts within 250 feet of residential development, and direct staff not to accept or process new applications for any necessary permits for the approval or construction of pickleball courts, or the conversion of existing facilities into pickleball courts within 250 feet of residential development, and to otherwise prohibit the establishment of, or the conversion of, existing uses into new pickleball courts within 250 feet of residential development during the time required for the preparation, consideration, and adoption of an amendment to the Land Development Code that creates appropriate distance separation and noise mitigation regulations for the development of pickleball courts near residential uses. This would set a public hearings on October 16 of 2025 at 6:00 p.m. and November 13 of 2025 at 6:00 p.m. for the consideration and adoption of amendments to the Land Development Code to regulate the development of pickleball courts near residential uses, including any recommendable distance separation of noise mitigation requirements.
I'll second.
And additionally, I'm committing now that if we really do, for some reason, receive a lawsuit over this, I will be the one to bring the item to, to end the changes to the LDC, to avoid unnecessary lawsuit.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Wostel, second Commissioner Miller, Commissioner
Harry beat me to the second. I saw him pushing the button.
I didn't push the button.
No, no, no. But that being said, I totally support this. Just real curious, though, and I see Adam sitting out in the crowd. I may want to ask him a question. To this point, and I think it's a really great idea to do that, when you have, if we're looking at properties, you know, so if we got R2, R4, and so what, and so some of these pieces of property are larger than others, if something like that, are we talking, when we're talking about residential uses, are we talking about an actual home where that's to 250 feet, or is it the plot of land that that home sits upon? Because, and I totally get that, you know, is it 250 feet from, if it's a five-acre land, just as an example, would that, how that would be interpreted, do you think?
My, my understanding of the motion is it's from the homes themselves.
The homes themselves, okay.
And so, yes.
Yes, I would just say that when we do that, we think about kind of however that can codify that component, that it's not, you got five acres of land, and then someone wants to build something, and obviously you can't hear it five acres away, but, or maybe you could, but.
And we can draft that very clearly in the Land Development Code. We have instances, we have separations from structures and also from zone property.
Yeah, maybe that's dwellings and structures, that kind of stuff.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Commissioner Myers?
Yep.
We just voted to seek an opinion from the AG, and now we're, can we wait to receive the opinion so we will know what is being said? I'm just asking. Asking the board.
Are you asking?
Christine?
Christine?
I mean, the board certainly has that choice, or if you want to proceed on a parallel path because you're willing to take the risk of, you know, a lawsuit, because you have the ability, as Commissioner Wostel said, that if they were to, if a lawsuit were to come, you have a period that is built into the Senate Bill 180 that if you repeal it within 14 days, there's a little bit of a process, you can avoid any attorney's fees and costs, but you would have to reconsider it after, after reviewing any lawsuit that came in. So that is a bit of a, of a safety valve, I guess.
No. Because I just think if we're seeking an opinion from the AG, we should wait because the legislatures are not in session right now. They don't go back until January. So if there's anything that's going to change, is going to occur in January 2026 during the session, and if we get an AG and ask them to expedite the opinion coming from this, I don't think we should hold that up. So I like to do a substitute motion that we just seek the AG opinion first before moving forward with this. That is my motion.
The substitute motion, Commissioner Myers? The substitute motion, Commissioner Myers, second Commissioner Cohen. Any comments on the substitute motion?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Wostol.
Does this motion accomplish, if the motion fails as it is, doesn't it accomplish the same thing? Because if my second motion fails, the AG opinion already passed. The substitute motion accomplishes the same thing as the original motion, as the main motion.
I see what you're saying, yeah.
Okay, then there's no need for the substitute motion, Mr. Chair.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second. No other comments, please record your vote. On the substitute.
Okay, on the substitute.
Are you saying something, I'm sorry?
For your motion.
What I'm saying, Commissioner Wostol is correct, because it's just saying, you're voting no, you're saying to, you just changed it around, and that's not, that's not okay. You have to, you'd have to do something different, which you didn't.
Okay, so her motion fails.
Yeah, her, her motion is not okay. We have to go back to his motion.
Okay, so now we'll.
She should just vote no, as well as Commissioner Cohen, if he's against it too, and anybody else.
Okay. All right, so the motion, original motion's on the floor. Can you change the vote?
Because.
The way to go on Commissioner Bowles and Commissioner Cohen.
No, the originally, we voted on the incorrect motion, so if you can clear the screen.
Close it out and.
Thank you.
So what we voted on now, Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Wostol's motion. Okay, so a motion by Commissioner Wostol, second Commissioner Miller. Please record your vote.
Motion carried five to two. Commissioners Cohen and Myers voted no.
Okay, next item.
Thank you. The next item is item G3, to receive a report regarding the next steps following the post-hurricane regional stormwater assessment, and Josh Bellotti is here to present this item.
Good morning, Josh.
Good morning, Commissioners. Josh Bellotti, Engineering and Operations, and this staff report is going to provide you with a brief update of the activities underway as the county continues moving through the next phase following the regional stormwater assessment completed by Black and Beach. As you all recall, it was just after Hurricane Milton that the board called for the independent consultant evaluation identifying several key areas around the county that had been affected by flooding. The board authorized that independent study by Black and Beach with a six-month timeframe to complete an initial phase that would include a high-level countywide analysis, community engagement, and conceptual recommendations to be presented back to the board. Those results were delivered at the budget workshop in July, and the county has proceeded into the next phase, which builds on those initial recommendations and moves towards the identification of capital projects and other possible solutions to mitigate future stormwater flooding. Black and Beach, through their analysis and community engagement, identified 18 flood focus areas that were evaluated in their report. As envisioned with this two-step process, the county is moving forward with further refinement and implementation of the conceptual recommendations. As an example of these actions for this update today, we're highlighting four of the key flood focus areas, Pemberton Creek Baker Canal, Northdale Carrollwood Brushy Creek, Town and Country, and Shangri-La. The Pemberton Creek and Baker Canal area was heavily impacted from flooding due to Hurricane Milton. A lot of folks live along this natural waterway, which traverses across hundreds of private properties on its way to Lake Tenota Sasa. I first want to highlight some of the work the county has been able to complete thus far, and that includes over 5,000 feet of emergency washout restoration and bank stabilization along portions of Baker Canal where the county has access and easements. We've also completed about 900 feet of ditch and pipe cleaning in this area. And we have several additional actions that are currently underway, one of them being completed by Black and Beach is a close look at the maintenance needs of the creek, along with clarification of ownership and maintenance responsibilities to inform an overall maintenance strategy going forward. They'll also support identification and development of capital improvement projects aimed at mitigating flooding. And of course, continued and further engagement and collaboration is an essential component of that process, with agency partners like SWIFTMUD, EPC, and Plant City, and with designated community stakeholders, individuals with key insights that participated in the previous Black and Beach engagement. This process is actually going to serve as a pilot that we can then apply to other focus areas as applicable. Going forward, we'll be able to take the restoration and enhancement projects that come out of this process and advance them forward into feasibility study and design. Next focus area for today is Northdale and Carrollwood, which are also served by a natural waterway, Brushy Creek. Following the impacts of Hurricane Milton, the county has conducted maintenance, sediment removal, and bank restoration on Brushy Creek at the Ehrlich Road Crossing, and has also cleared and de-snagged vegetative obstruction along the creek from Ehrlich to Northdale. We have similar actions underway here with engineering analysis to identify potential flood mitigation projects, and this is also going to incorporate community engagement and collaboration with stakeholders, partners, and permitting agencies. And then going forward, those potential projects will be refined and advanced to the next phases. One of those that will begin the planning phase is a conveyance and habitat restoration along Brushy Creek from West Village Drive all the way to Northdale Boulevard and approximately two-mile length of the creek. Town and Country is the next focus area, and it's a little bit different than the other two in that it has about 20 miles of man-made drainage canals supplementing the natural creeks. It's a very low-lying area in close proximity to the bay, and so very heavily tidily influenced. Hurricane Milton significantly impacted the drainage canals, and the county has had to complete four and a half miles of emergency restoration and bank stabilization. Also repaired all three stormwater pump stations in this area and have been replacing stormwater culverts as well. Again, it's a similar approach here with the ongoing and future actions, doing the engineering analysis necessary to identify potential capital improvements, and then further refining those projects to advance them forward. Some examples include, one, that is in response to the impacts of Milton, which is the restoration of channels A, G, and H, and the Henry Street Canal, and another project that was already in development prior to last year's hurricanes, which is the Town and Country Regional Drainage Improvements. And again, as with the others, a key aspect of these efforts will be the continued engagement across the board with permitting agencies, stakeholders, and the local community. The last focus area for today is Shangri-La, and this one is an example where there has already been extensive coordination and engagement with the community and partner agencies. County staff, along with SWIFTMUD and Commissioner Miller, has met with the residents of this community to collaborate, share what actions the county is undertaking, as well as opportunities that the community has to take action. Future plans include a permanent stormwater pumping station for this area. So you may have sensed a common theme in the approaches moving forward in each one of these focus areas. The county is building off the evaluation and conceptual recommendations from Black and Beach and working with them to complete the next phase of engineering analysis to develop maintenance strategies and identify capital projects. I want to emphasize again that collaboration with agency partners and community engagement will be a central focus of that effort, to solicit feedback as these projects are refined and evaluated for feasibility, and then we'll bring those back to the board with potential funding strategies. Additional capital projects identified through these efforts will join the already growing list of unfunded capital needs. The county will be completing the rate study for the stormwater non-ad valorem assessment, which is one piece of the, of the funding puzzle. Other opportunities may include local special assessments, community investment tax revenue, and grants such as the federal CDBD, CDBGDR program, which has already been identified for several of these large stormwater capital projects. So much more to follow on this, of course, and our team will continue to work diligently to move all of this forward. Thank you very much, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Josh, for the presentation. Commissioner Wostol.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Are most of the stormwater management issues or maintenance issues, are they in, is it in East Hillsborough? Is that where a lot of them exist?
I would say that's fair. There are areas around the county, but yes, some areas of East Hillsborough were particularly hardest hit.
You were helping me with a, a bridge that's still out in East Hillsborough from the hurricanes. It's impacting school, it's impacting our major agricultural producers, and to my understanding, some of the biggest delays on that are going to be from permitting. Now, Governor DeSantis built a massive bridge to reconnect whichever island that was, I forget, in like days, I think. Do we not, do we have like in a, an emergent permitting process to say like, hey, on these, we can get to relief? Like, do we have something like that? Because I was, I was very dismayed to hear that the biggest holdup was going to be the permitting side of that.
Well, I can speak to that issue specifically. And yeah, the example that you bring up is the Sanibel Causeway.
Okay, thank you.
It's the only connection to Sanibel Island.
Yes.
Which was completely cut off from the mainland following Hurricane Ian. And there was a massive outpouring of resources and manpower and effort during that declared emergency to restore that temporary access within a couple of weeks. In this situation with this particular bridge, Pippin Road in East County, pleased to let you know that the environment, or that the permitting process has been complete. So the design is complete, and we have now secured all of the necessary permits for construction at this phase.
See, that only took a week.
There you go. So at this phase, we are negotiating with the construction contractor, and so we'll continue to provide your office with updates of those, but we're looking forward to moving into the next phase here.
But, I mean, while I'm elated to hear that live, you can see my real reaction, which I assure you, this is my happy face. Do we need to create something like that, though, just to get communities back online quicker, or do you feel like that that's not necessary for some of this stormwater stuff? Do we feel like it's unnecessary, or do we feel like it could help staff?
Greg Horwiddell, Deputy County Administrator, that is an excellent question, and I am also elated to hear, I didn't know that yesterday when I talked with the commissioner, so fantastic to hear that the permitting has been resolved.
Yeah.
The one thing that emergency management is working with the county attorney's office is what we can do, not just on public permitting projects, but also private roads that are impacted. We've had a number of those. It's about 200 of those private roads with bridges that are in the county. Some of them were damaged, and they're still going through their process to special assess their residents to get those back, back up and running. We believe that we can do some initial work on the permitting and potentially steer them toward some contracting assistance. However, we need to work through the process with the county attorney's office and make sure that we're not going to do anything that would put us, as the county, in an untenable position.
Sure.
So we are working on that. We will have something back before you, we believe, in the next two or three months.
Okay.
So we want to, again, just make sure we're doing it the right way.
Great. I, thanks.
Commissioner Cohen.
Thank you very much, and thank you very much for that report. You know, consistently, I think, when we're all talking to our constituents, there's a lot of concern that's expressed to us. Particularly, there was about being ready for this hurricane season, but as we, as we make our way through it, what I wanted to ask you about is what we're going to be doing between now and the beginning of the next hurricane season, because we've gotten all this information back now from Black and Beach. I know the crews are out there and they're working. Are they going to be continuing to work throughout the calendar year to get ready for next year? And they're going to continue to be cleaning culverts and ditches and, and outfalls and making the kind of, of progress that, I think the storm was our impetus, but we need to, we need to stay focused and not, not, the further we get away from it, not allow it to slip into the rearview mirror.
Absolutely. I 100% agree with that, Commissioner, and we will continue to focus on maintaining the stormwater system and doing the things that we do every year to prepare for hurricane season. We've put an extra emphasis on it this year. There was a lot of recovery efforts and, and then moving into the preparation for the season, and we plan on continuing and doing the same thing right into next season as well. We have, you know, some resource challenges, but we've expanded our use of maintenance contracts to help keep up with the additional workload. We also, as I mentioned before, have our rate study, which we'll be bringing to you, which will include options for the board to consider regarding higher levels of maintenance and additional investment in capital projects.
When do you think that we're going to be having that discussion?
So our aim is to have the rate study completed by the end of the calendar year so that we can bring it back to the board for discussion in the early part of '26.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Myers.
Thank you, Josh, for your report. You mentioned about the capital projects that should be joining. You know, there's always a concern that I have in Progress Village, Clare Mill, and Winston Park. Are we going to do anything, because when it rains real bad and all the flooding that happened in those three areas, would Black and Beach be looking at that so that they can join the list and see how we can get some funding there to make some improvements in those three communities?
Absolutely. Yes, ma'am. We are looking at all of those flood focus areas, including that one, for capital improvement opportunities.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, can we have a motion to accept the report? Motion, Commissioner Wostol, second Commissioner Miller. Please record your vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Bonnie, next item.
Thank you. Your final staff report is item G4. This is to receive a report regarding the Commission on Human Trafficking Data, supported budget funding requests for fiscal year '26. Brandon Wagner will present this item.
Good morning, Brandon.
Good morning. Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity. At the August 20th board meeting, the board asked the Commission on Human Trafficking for additional budget information with backup data to accompany it. Commission on Human Trafficking came together and provided that information that's contained in the staff report. It outlines a number of options for the board to consider on a going-forward basis. It also acknowledges the request of the board that the Commission on Human Trafficking come forward now on a biannual basis to provide updates to you and their activities. They had come in January. We'll plan on, after execution of this, coming back in January again to create that six-month report and continuing to do so twice a year thereafter. With that, happy to answer any questions. Also, Connie Rose, the Chair of the Commission on Human Trafficking, is also here to provide more detailed information to the budget document that they presented to you.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Cameron Cepeda.
Yes, thank you. So, okay, thank you. I want to thank all the speakers that came out today. They did a really great job talking about human trafficking. Every one of them were just awesome. I really thank you all for coming out. And also, would just like to add that human trafficking is not a distant issue. It's a local crisis, and Hillsborough County leads the state in human trafficking, as we all know from the reports, but there are not just numbers. There are children, teens, and the very vulnerable adults in our communities who are being exploited and are in desperate need of immediate trauma-informed care. And also, every line item that comes through here is very important, but I would also like to add that this is investment in human dignity, public safety, and the future of our most vulnerable residents, and our funding decisions must reflect the seriousness of the crisis. And additionally, as Brandon Wagner also mentioned there, I believe it's very important that we have the Commission on Human Trafficking to present the semi-annual report as well.
Commissioner Wostol.
Thanks. I just, I stepped in last meeting just because the original one was going to die without a second. This is not my item. I just want us to look at the options and have a conversation. I'm glad Ms. Rose is here. Hopefully you can communicate. A lot of the speakers confused me because they seemed to kind of lean in the direction that they felt like the 267 funding, that your funding was in jeopardy, which was never the case to my understanding, but a lot of them kind of had that, that communication. So if you can make sure that they know that, that was not what was on the table. And then another speaker had alluded that they felt like, they said something like, no matter what people say, that, that this might, may not be effective. I've never heard that, that connotation hinted towards here, so if we can communicate that back to them, I would just tell the board I'm in favor of option one. I think that that's an extremely reasonable one, and then we also accomplish them getting more involved in the budget process, because, look, I, I give the administrator probably the hardest time of us, but I recognize that she's got the most impossible task to try and meet all of the different requests from the different directors and budgets and the special commissions that we've made it like, made like this one, and there's various other ones that get funding sources. So it's like, she has like the impossible job. It feels like option one is the most reasonable. Really, I just stepped in because I felt like whatever was asking was going to, last meeting was going to die. So yeah, I like option one. That's what I'm saying.
Second.
Ma'am. Ma'am, did you want to make a brief comment?
Well, I'm not really sure what.
Well, I'm not really sure what comment to make, other than to say thank you. My understanding that option one is, is basically, it is our reoccurring, the 267, and then the $100,000 is a rollover from last year so that it would bring us to our 367. So that's what we would have to, to work with. And then it's my understanding, and I'm just going to ask for clarification, and I apologize for this, that us coming back with our semi-annual would mean that also that if there was an opportunity, after presenting numbers, et cetera, of the work that we have been doing, that there could possibly maybe be an opportunity for some additional funding if that warrants that opportunity for that. Is that correct, or am I misunderstanding that?
You look at, I'll, I'll answer. I would just say that what it does is it gives you the opportunity to present your needs.
Perfect.
And those needs will be looked at.
Mm-hmm.
The Commissioners are technically not supposed to be this involved in the, the budget line items. It's the Budget Director. In, in our case, we have designated the County Administrator, but you, you would not be precluded from, if another Commissioner wanted to flag you items, like we've all said today about the flags countless times, it's, they get their one-time flag. So you could present that case. I would say, though, let's make sure, though, that there's not surprises, because that leads to disaster and confusion. So as much information ahead of time always helps us be as informed in our decision-making process.
Yes, absolutely.
You get that? Okay.
Yes, yes, absolutely. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Commissioner Cohen?
Thank you very much. Commissioner Cameron Cepeda, I just wanted to thank you for bringing this item up. I, Ms. Rose, for coming to see me. I found it all very educational, and I learned a lot from the dialogue that we've had over the last couple of weeks. I'm happy to support Commissioner Wustel's motion, and I, you know, I'm really sad that this is an issue that is, is so necessary for us to combat, because it is a, it's just a tragic situation, but I'm really glad that the board is committed to funding the efforts to eradicate this or minimize it to whatever degree that we can. And, you know, I've learned a lot to, about what we all see every day that may pass right in front of us and not necessarily set off the alarm bells that, that are necessary, and I hope this raises a lot of awareness for the issue.
Commissioner Bowles?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Totally agree that we need to consider this. With the 100,000 to carry, or that's for, and I'll go off what Ms. Grover Skipper was saying, was that part of these encumbered funds that have been invoiced, but that, or haven't been invoiced? So those will be reimbursed?
Right. These are funds from fiscal year '25 so that they wouldn't get lost. We're going, we have included them in the fiscal year '26 budget.
We only have a little smidgen of time left in our current budget year.
Right, so we're proposing to, which we did propose in the fiscal year '26 budget to carry $100,000 over.
And, and then what we've normally done is the $267,000 every year, and I know this, but I'm just kind of saying it out loud. And in the past, it seems like there, the amounts that have come above and beyond that recurring funding for this have been through flagged items through a various number of Commissioners over the years.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so if, that being the case, and since, I would ask, at the very least, and to consider, and I'm just saying this out loud, I'm not making a motion, just to consider perhaps number four, because with the removal of the UACDC from the item list, that frees out $215,000 that would have been moved over there, this is a one-time shot at this, if we would consider that, at the very least, for this one time. And then if a Commissioner wants to flag this next year for fiscal year '27, that would be the case.
Commissioner Cameron Cepeda?
So, I was originally going to make, I know that the board wanted to discuss this, so I was waiting to make an, make a motion, but, which was planning to make a motion on number one, option one. However...
I'm asking for option four.
Yes, he's asking for option four.
Yeah, Commissioner, item one, option one is currently on, on the table.
Right, yes. But I was already in the queue, I mean, that's, you know, that's why I was saying that. I was in the queue, so, but then that was made already, so...
First of all, let's clarify, because everyone's assuming Commissioner Wustel made a motion. Was that your intent?
No, I just said that's, I'd be fine with that one. I have not made a motion.
Okay, so there's no motion on the floor right now. So Commissioner Cameron Cepeda, you can have at it.
I will second the...
So, how about this? I will formally make a motion that we adopt number four as presented, only due to the fact that it's a one-time, not reoccurring, and that we were able to free up $215,000, and we're still having savings on that.
I'll second.
Okay, so, motion on the floor for option number four by Commissioner Bowles, second Commissioner Miller. I, I'm sorry, I could have gone either way, between one and four. I was not going to, wasn't prepared today to support additional recurring funding, but since this is recurring and one-time, and additional one-time, I'm going to support, I'm going to support the motion. Don't see anyone else in the queue?
And I originally seconded that when I was talking for Commissioner Bowles.
Okay. Second by Commissioner Cameron Cepeda and Commissioner Miller. Please accord your vote.
I'm thinking, give me a second.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
She's still contemplating.
So that ended up being, Mr. Chair, can I?
It's, it's 500,000 total this year.
No.
Mr. Chair, would you like me to recap it?
No.
Okay.
Okay. Please announce vote.
I'll just go ahead.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Okay. Bonnie?
That's all, just future discussion items.
Any future issues?
Thank you.
No. I don't see any future issues, so we are adjourned.